Welcome to the February 9th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Draymond and the invocation by Pastor Charles Updike.
Would you please stand and place your right hand over your heart and join me in saying the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to work together as citizens. Bless our council and mayor as they lead us. We ask this in your name, amen. Mr. Kusakian, may we have your report?
The agenda for the February 9th, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is supposed to on Thursday, February 4th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, next, please.
Next, as presentation and appointments, at 3A is Agenda Preview for the meeting of February 16th, 2010.
Mr. Starber.
And let me go to Mr. McFaul, Assistant City Manager, for the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Starber, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Glendale Housing Authority next week, there's no specific action items. The redevelopment agency, starting at 2:30, will have one business item. This is the Director of Community Redevelopment Housing regarding the installation of four additional lights along the public alley, a mid-block pedestrian crosswalk on South Louis Street, and a construction opening along the north side of the Marketplace Public Parking Garage in connection with the construction of the Armenian Society of Los Angeles located at 117 South Louis. This will be followed by a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the redevelopment agency, also scheduled for 2:30, with a single report from the Director of Community Services and Parks. And this is the preparation of the environmental impact report for the Columbus Elementary School Soccer Field Joint Use Project. At evening, at 6 o'clock, the city council will hold a regular scheduled meeting. There's a number of items. The first, depending upon the action from council this evening, will be the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the approval and a lease of real property to STC One LLC for an existing telecommunications facility at Freeway Park Site Eight. There will next be an action item from the Director of Administrative Services and Finance, and this is the second quarter financial updates adjustments to the adopted 2009-10 budget. Next, the Director of Community Services and Parks will be submitting a report on the grant application to the statewide park development and community revitalization program for 2008. This is for the Maryland Mini Park Project. And then lastly, the Director of Community Planning will be submitting the one-year update on the city efforts to limit exposure to secondhand tobacco sales. That would be all.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Next, at 3B is a proclamation designating February 5th, 2010, as National Wear Red Day.
Okay, the proclamation reads, "Whereas diseases of the heart are the nation's leading cause of death, and stroke is the third leading cause of death, cardiovascular disease claims the lives of over 460,000 American females each year, approximately one death per minute. Each year, 53% of all deaths due to cardiovascular disease and 61% of stroke deaths occur in females. In 2010, the direct and indirect cost of cardiovascular diseases in the United States, including stroke, is estimated at $503 billion. Nearly as many women die of heart disease, stroke, and all other cardiovascular diseases than the next five leading causes of death combined, including all cancers. February is designated as American Heart Month. Go Red for Women is the American Heart Association's national call to increase awareness of heart disease, the leading cause of death for women, and to inspire women to take charge of their heart health. All women should learn their own personal risk for heart disease using tools such as the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women Heart Checkup, Go Red for Women Better You, and by talking to their healthcare providers. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim February 5th, 2010, as National Wear Red Day."
Who is receiving this? Is there someone here to receive this proclamation?
Hmm, looks like there's not. Okay, well, we'll send it to the American Heart Association, and that's interesting. I was not aware that such a high incidence of heart disease. Okay, next, please.
Next, the city council and staff comments.
Any city council, Ms. Friedman.
Thank you. This last weekend, I attended a conference for the Independent Cities Association. The theme of the conference was law enforcement, and it was attended by representatives, elected representatives, from all over Southern California. And it was very valuable to be with my peers and to talk about different solutions that cities are coming up with to face the increased pressure on law enforcement and safety in this time of budget constraints. One of the most alarming things that I heard about, and I'm sure you've all heard about it, is the early release of prisoners that is going forward at this point. There's going to be over 40,000 inmates released into the community, well, into California in general, a lot of them in this region. And it may seem that these are not, it's not an important group of people, but actually, these inmates who are going to be released are the highest, have the highest rate of recidivism of committing crimes over again than the ones that are being kept in jail. Because normally, it's not the person who's committed the murder that commits multiple murders, but somebody who maybe mugs people, breaks into your home, steals your car. These are the people who are career criminals, who get out and, you know, reoffend. And because of the state's budget issues, what they're doing is, they're just sort of dumping these people out of the prisons without the typical types of supervision that they normally give to parolees. So they're not going to be supervised, they're not going to be put into work programs or any kind of program, they're just going to be released without doing their time. And I find this very alarming and very concerning. So I spoke to Ron DePampa, our Chief of Police, and of course, he's very alarmed by this. And he and the other police chiefs in the area have been working on strategies that we can take and that the surrounding cities in the area can take to try to address this. So hopefully, very soon, if my colleagues will permit, Chief DePampa will come and give a presentation about the scope of the problem and also the different solutions that we can maybe look at and discuss going forward. And he's going to be making the same presentation to the Royal Bredugo Steering Committee so that we can make these sorts of plans with Burbank and Pasadena and South Pasadena and La Cuenca to Plintridge, because we're going to really have to address this as a region, not just as a city. So thank you for letting me give that update, and if you're concerned about this issue, please keep an eye on the agenda, and hopefully, we can have some participation from the public.
Ms. Friedman. Mr. Starber.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on that note, Chief DePampa is putting the finishing touches to a presentation, and we'll have a study session scheduled to review both the state program as well as an action plan for addressing it in the next several weeks.
Any other comments? Why don't we hear from, I believe it's Marlene Elms, who's here to receive the American Heart Association nomination?
My name is Marlena Lenas, and I'm a volunteer spokesperson for the Los Angeles County Division of the American Heart Association, where a place of the City of Glendale has once again recognized February as the American Heart Month. Many people are not aware of the fact that heart disease and stroke are the number one and number three killers of women. Together, these diseases claim the lives of nearly 500,000 women each year. That's more than the next seven causes of death combined, including all forms of cancer. The American Heart Association conceived Go Red for Women as a compelling response to this public health challenge. The campaign encourages women of all ages and backgrounds to discover unique lifesaving power by learning about heart disease and stroke and taking positive action to reduce their risk of both diseases. Thank you, Mayor Quintero and the rest of the city council for recognizing this important cause and going red in support of women and heart disease.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here tonight and for working so hard to make people aware of this issue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Starber.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I want to extend my apologies to the young lady. She's late because when she came in, she asked me where the council meeting was being recorded, and I said, "Down in the basement," so. I think I sent her on a wild goose chase, as opposed to, "Where is the council meeting?"
All right, thank you very much.
But she found her way back.
Okay, why don't we go to Steve Zern and maybe get an update on hillsides, catch paces, et cetera?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have gone through a couple of days since last Friday, Saturday, early morning Saturday of probably some of the most trying times we've had since the station fire burn occurred and we've entered into our storm season. Saturday, as you all saw in the news, many of our neighboring communities were hit very hard by the early morning, 4 o'clock to 5:00 AM, heavy downpour that came and created, what is essentially, a flash flood that turns into debris flow while it picks up materials along the way. While our residents were spared any significant damage, we did get some debris out on the roads, and we cleaned that up rather quickly and throughout Duke Mason Park. The debris basins, we're very fortunate, as I've said before, to have the basins that we do to the east and the west, but I will tell you, they are pretty full. They're pretty much at capacity. The intensity of this rain brought down material we had not seen before, heavy timber, heavy rock debris, some of the things that we were most worried about, and they came down. Luckily for us, they settled in the basins. The problem is, and today, we were looking at another forecast of heavy rain without an opportunity to get in those basins and clean them. That's the county that does that, but will assist them if need be. It looks to this point that we have maybe dodged another bullet with this particular rain situation. There was a flash flood warning until 5:00 PM, and I don't know if that was extended, but while rains may continue through the evening, we didn't have any incidents this afternoon or this evening in any of our areas. Slight debris, we cleaned up quickly. Hopefully, if we get through this and the sun comes out as been predicted, we'll have a chance to get in those basins and clean them out, because they are very full. They did their job, but they are very full, and they can't take a whole lot more. So we notified all of our residents, staff of many departments. We're here all day Saturday, cleaning up and checking and making sure that we had our preparations in place for any further rain. We missed the afternoon squall that was supposed to come in, and that was a very fortunate thing as well. As we're all seeing, these predictions are, it's far from an exact science, and whether these storms actually come across and hit us or not, we don't know, but we can't take any chances, so we have been very vigilant in our preparation. Yesterday, after, we've been in close contact with the LA County, both the law enforcement, the Fire Department, the Public Works Department, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, after conversations with them, while they did go ahead with their evacuations, we did not decide to do that at this time, but we did hand-deliver messages to all of the areas, what we call the high-risk areas in the station fire, and along East Glen Oaks in the freeway fire area, letting them know we needed to get their cars off the streets, we needed them to be prepared to go when that call came, and also, at least up in the station fire area, the continuing debris basin cleaning and truck traffic that they are experiencing up there. The county worked all night long cleaning basins throughout the station fire burn area. So as usual, we continue to have great response and great cooperation from the residents in the northern part of the city, and we are just continuing, as I said, to be vigilant in our efforts, be prepared. Staff is meeting, today we met probably every two or three hours to keep pace on what was happening, and we'll continue to do that and continue to keep contact with the county as well. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, let me emphasize something Steve touched on. We have tried to be very judicious in our use of mandatory evacuations. For that reason, though, when we do ask our residents to evacuate, it's because it's going to be very serious. We hope we don't need to utilize it, but if we do, and when we do, it'll be because we see an imminent threat on the horizon. We are trying to keep people stationed at all the critical points so that we're not just pulling that trigger. Just because it happens to be raining in this last rain event was a very good example of that. We didn't pull that trigger, we did alert everyone. So when we do issue it, it's because it's very serious, we need to have people heed the warning and evacuate when we do ask them to.
All right, any other comments? Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Next is consent items. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Okay, I'm going to pull 5C. I have two speaker cards. Someone move the consent.
The remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Would you read 5C?
5C is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding proposed Maryland mini park development work at 810, 812, and 816 South Maryland Avenue. At C1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with David Vols Design DVD at Costa Mesa in the amount of $38,305, inclusive of reimbursable expenses and a 10% contingency of $3,831 for a total of $42,136 for design services and the preparation of master planning documents.
Okay, let's hear from the public. Mike Mohill, followed by Nancy Kent.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. I'm very excited that this Maryland mini park is going to be developed. It'll just be one more mini park for the south part of Glendale. Unfortunately, we're not going to have a regional park for South Glendale. No soccer fields, no swimming pool, well, maybe a swimming pool. This area is gang-infested, and I think if we had council districts, this area would get more attention than it gets today. Mini parks are wonderful for grandparents and their children, but where are all of the teenagers and the young adults are going to play? They're going to be playing in the jails again? We have, you know, quality of life is important, and not having a large regional park is something that is seriously missing for South Glendale. I know we've talked about it often. I'd like to ask the question about the pool for Pacific Park, is where do we get the money? In November of last year, in December, we didn't have the money, and the last time I heard on the comment from the council was you're planning to move ahead with the pool. I'd like to know, where do we find the funding? Because in the same fiscal year, you didn't have the money, in November, December. So I, and I'm not privy to how the finances is being done, I'm sure a lot of people would like to know that information, too. And again, thank you very much for bringing forward the park.
Thank you. Nancy Kent.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. I would like to request that, as this park is designed, it is designed to be as simple as possible, with as much open space left as possible, and as few decorative elements as you see fit. Also, the land there now is flat. I hope that the open space will be left flat rather than being reshaped into contours as was done at Elk Mini Park. I think that makes it harder for children to run around in when it's, the ground is wavy. And I think the best possible scenario would be if people were allowed to grow things on all or part of this land. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that'll close the public input. Are there any questions or comments? Does someone want to move the item?
Move 5C1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
There were no announcements, card submitted. With your discretion, we'll move.
Mr. Mayor. Communication to the end of the meeting. Let's move to item 8C. The Director of Public Works regarding presentation of California High-Speed Train (HST) by the California High-Speed Rail Authority's consultant team. C1 is a motion to note and file a report. All right, we're going to receive a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let me just make a quick introduction. We, the city staff and Mr. Starber, have been meeting with the California High-Speed Rail Authority team, many of whom are here in the audience, over the last several months as they have given us their presentation and their plans, and we have also given them feedback on our concerns and reservations about certain aspects of that plan. To date, they have been responsive, but there's a lot of discussion left, as I'm sure you can realize, a project of this magnitude and the impact it can have on our business and residential community, and we're also very interested where that station's going to be. But at this point in time, the project team wanted to come and make a presentation to council, and so without further ado, this is Mr. Steve Ortman representing the authority, and he's prepared, and his team is prepared, to give that presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Steve Ortman with URS Corporation. I'm a member of the project team, working on the High-Speed Rail Project section from LA Union Station to Palmdale. As Steve mentioned, we have met with your staff a number of times, and we felt it was time in the process to give you guys a little bit of an update and solicit some questions and feedback from you, and then talk a little bit about some of our partner agencies. I want to recognize Councilman Najarian from Metro, and we've worked very closely with Metro over the last couple of months, particularly around the Union Station area and elsewhere. And I spent the afternoon putting together about 35 or so slides to share with you background and introduction and where we are. And when I walked in the door a few moments ago, I was told by Sarah Costin from Consensus Inc., our public outreach firm, that our presentation now has been cut in half, and so I'm as anxious as you guys are to find out where Sarah's going to start me in the presentation. She told me the first 10 or 12 slides on the background, we were going to do away with it. You were more concerned about the alignment, and you wanted to keep me to about 15 minutes. Normally, it takes me about 15 minutes to introduce myself, so Sarah's going to rush me through the first 10 or 12, and then we'll get to the meat of the matter, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And we have, most of our technical team, our engineering folks are here as well, and if you ask any questions that you see me, my eyes start to roll around in my sockets, I'll quickly call on our engineering team and get them to give you the right answer to the question.
I think if we can start.
For those of you, just a little bit of history, from about 1995, when, 1996, when the High-Speed Rail Authority was created, up until very recently, there was very little done other than this program-wide environmental impact statement. The program-wide environmental impact statement sort of generally outlined the corridors and the stations statewide that we were looking at. And then not a lot, a whole lot happened after that document got approved. Most recently, again, with the passage of Prop 1A, the bond measure, there was a lot of momentum to move things forward and begin the process really in earnest. So in the spring of 2007, we started with our public outreach folks, reaching out to the communities again that had been engaged in 2003 to 2005 in the original program level EIR/ES, and sort of reintroduced the community to the project and started what we refer to as the project level EIR/ES, where we take the program level, the very broad, and bring it back down to, you know, the program level is sort of the 30,000-foot view. The project level is where the rubber meets the road, and where we actually try and figure out how to build this and what it's going to look like, what the implications on community is going to be, and the like. You just keep going as you want to move me along. So we started in 2007 with the process here. The initial scoping involved an extensive series of public outreach. That lasted about a year. We are, at this point in the process right now, where we're defining the alternatives analysis process and the alternatives that we want to move forward into the environmental documentation. We've done a lot of meetings with both staff and elected officials, and the issue always is, is, well, gee, this feels brand-new again to us. How many bites at the apple are we going to have? How many bites at the apple will our communities have to provide input and feedback and shape the direction of this? If this could be identified as sort of point zero in the process, and this is sort of 100% completion, we are right here right now. So we're about 7% to 10% or so of the way through the process, so there's going to be extensive opportunity for everyone to get engaged. This is sort of a graphic representation of what that process looked like. What we have up here in gray are the opportunities for our lead agencies, the Federal Railroad Administration and the California High-Speed Rail Authority, to weigh in on the process. What we have down here in green is the technical process that we, as engineers and planners, are going through. And down here in brown are the opportunities for stakeholders in the communities and elected officials to weigh into the process. We are, as of March 4th, when we present this alternatives analysis that we'll talk a little bit about here in a few minutes, to the High-Speed Rail Authority Board, we will be at this box right here. So you don't want me to talk about what goes into the AA process? Okay, so we'll talk specifically about the LA to Palmdale section. For many reasons, we divided this 62-mile section into three components, for geography, for funding, for reasons of funding. And so we started down here at Union Station and terminated the first alternatives analysis at the 134. The second section is 134 up the north end of the valley in Silmar, and then the third section is from the north end of the valley on up through the mountains to the Palmdale area. We're not going to focus too much on that right now. What you have here is, in Southern California, taking a step back from the project-specific, you have three main lines coming into Union Station right here. You've got the Anaheim to LA line, you've got LA to Palmdale, and then ultimately, the San Diego to Union Station as well. So Union Station is a hub in Southern California for a lot of activity. That's why we've been working very closely with Metro, very closely with the City of Los Angeles. What you see here in yellow are the proposed station locations, generally, that were identified in the program level EIR back in 2005, and want to talk a little bit about that now and some of the technical issues that zero in on the Glendale and Burbank area. Our mission all along, our goal all along, has been to take advantage of existing railroad infrastructure that's out there, from essentially Union Station out to Silmar. We have Metro right-of-way about 100 feet. You know, unfortunately, MetroLink operates right down the middle of that, so there's been some challenges there. So we wanted to, we started out by looking at a lot of different things. And the first thing we looked at was staying outside of the right-of-way with high-speed rail on the, help me out, John. This is the east side of the street. This seemed very counterintuitive to me when I was, on the east side of the street, and that would wind up taking out one of the service roads parallel to MetroLink, so we didn't think that was particularly feasible. Then we looked at going on the west side of the string, west side of the right-of-way on the San Fernando roadside of the corridor, and actually having an elevated section over the street. For many reasons, that didn't feel particularly compelling as well. And then we looked at a couple of options that looked at sharing the existing Metro right-of-way with MetroLink and with freight operations. We looked initially at an alignment on the east side of the street, on the west side of the street, I'm sorry, the west side of the right-of-way, and for many reasons, interruption with existing rail operations. You have the Ventura Line north of here going off from Burbank. That didn't feel particularly good to us. And so we wound up with this option where we are proposing sharing the right-of-way with, and I noticed this afternoon, we got our labeling wrong here. High-speed train should be over here, MetroLink should be over here. The label is wrong. So high-speed train on the east side of the right-of-way adjacent to San Fernando Road, that's the alignment option that we're currently moving forward with. Once we established where we were going to go, the question is, how are we going to make it all fit? How are we going to get up and down? How are we going to work with some of the grade crossings and the like? So we'll talk a little bit about, I'll just identify what all these are. Throughout the right-of-way, there's going to be a little bit of each of this. So for example, where we have freeway overpasses and grade crossings that we don't want to have. have to deal with, we may have some viaduct sections. For those areas where we have roadways at grade that it makes sense to go below the roadways, we might have trench sections. And these sections might be open trench that might be covered in spots, so we can connect the communities across those trenches. And then, we'll have some significant tunneling sections as well. As you imagine, as we get up through the mountains, you'll see more and more of the tunneling sections.
Excuse me, sir. The city manager just informed me that we've actually lost the audio for our viewers at home. So let's just hold on a minute. We'll just recess just for a brief couple of minutes. No, it won't. But this is something that's very important to the city, obviously.
Is that because I'm wandering around on the podium here away from the mic?
No, we've lost.
Oh, okay.
All right, well.
We should proceed. It's not our technical problem, it's a cable problem.
Okay. All right, go ahead, sir.
Not to overstate the obvious, but the answer is yes. The more blue boxes you see on this slide, the more challenges and issues we have coming through the community. Lots of grade crossings, particularly in this urban corridor that's largely developed already. We have things like water conveyances, the Verdugo Wash, but primarily grade-crossing issues, and I want to talk quickly about how we're going to deal with those. First, let's talk about some of the station options. We think that there's an interesting opportunity to move the existing MetroLink station in Burbank down the right-of-way, further south. And this was actually an opportunity that was shared with us by City of Burbank staff in looking at the growth of downtown Burbank that we think has the potential to tie into Glendale as well and present some interesting redevelopment opportunities for the City of Glendale. The station itself would be located right over Alameda Street, and it would require moving the existing MetroLink station down here as well. We would be on the, yeah, you can zap through all of those. We would be, again, the red line, high-speed rail. We would be on the east side of the right-of-way in all cases. So the Burbank station option, that I think many of us have talked about in the past, was the original option that was identified in the 2005 report, is up north. Here's the existing MetroLink station here. And one of the questions we get all the time is, why can't you just develop your facility in conjunction with the existing MetroLink station? One of the things that we talk about a lot, we're not going to talk a lot about tonight, is these stations are significantly larger than anything that MetroLink builds and operates. The stations themselves are, Mike, you want to help me out? 1,400 feet long?
1,400.
Yeah, the stations are 1,400 feet long. The train sets themselves are about 1,100 feet long, and they need to be on straight track. You don't want a train curving out away from the track on the front and the back while the middle of the train is adjacent to the platform. So we need straight track, tangent section track, for about 1,400 feet. And even though it doesn't look like it on these images here, this existing MetroLink station is on a curve that doesn't work for a 1,400-foot high-speed train platform, an 1,100-foot high-speed rail train. So we need to find tangent track, either north or south. And so, we've identified two locations. Initially, this was the preferred site for Burbank because of the redevelopment opportunity that was identified here. Again, the slide I showed to you a moment ago, we've identified a site down here that we think, from an engineering standpoint, has some positive attributes to it. We think, from a community development standpoint, it has some positive attributes to it. And we think, from the standpoint of being more closely tied to the City of Glendale, where we can actually have a Glendale-Burbank station. And yes, when I go to Burbank, I call it the Burbank-Glendale Station. I will acknowledge that. But closer to both communities, further south down here, that we think might make sense from a lot of different reasons, and we're going to examine that through the alternatives process. Some of the key constraints, we talked about this a little bit. We've got some fault lines. But the major issues are existing transportation infrastructure and how we snake our way up and down and around and through this. We've got some land use issues that I'll touch on in a little bit when we address some of the issues associated with overpasses and how we get this high-speed rail project grade-separated. And then, we've got a few areas coming through Glendale where the right-of-way is constrained and may present a little bit of an issue, and we're working through that now. So as I mentioned to you, we divided the alternatives analysis report into three sections. So the first section is L.A. Union Station to 134, and then 134 up to the north end of the valley. So in fact, Glendale has two pieces. You'll be in the north end of the Glendale community in the 134 to Silmar Alternatives Analysis. And then, the first Alternatives Analysis from L.A. Union Station to 134, you'll be in that one as well. So looking at the north study area, we just took that big graph that I showed you with all the challenges on it and split it into two pieces. We've got the challenges here associated with these grade crossings here. We've got the wash down here, and the MetroLink station up here. And I think that the issue here that I wanted to point out, you see, this is, we have some colored sections here, blue down here, blue up here. We'd like to try and stay at grade in the MetroLink right-of-way corridor to the extent possible, obviously, for cost and other reasons. That's not going to be possible, again, as we try and get through some of the existing transportation infrastructure. So what you see here in purple, if that's the right color, purple, coming through Western Avenue or crossing Western Sonora, Grandview, and Flower is a viaduct structure that, John, help me out again, maybe 30 feet up in the air through here?
Up to...
Up to, okay, 30 to 60? Okay. Because we don't want to have to deal with the very significant amount of work involved with doing grade structures at these crossings right now. So our sense right now is, through this section of the north end of Glendale, that it makes the most sense for us to go up in the air and leave the existing roadway network in place. Go ahead. On the south end, you see more at-grade, and in order to leave Chevy Chase in place where it is now, we're proposing to go up and over that and then come back down to grade as we go further north. And I think down here, I think what we meant to say was SR2, not I2. So in profile, what would that look like? You see, this is, you're, back up a minute. Don't bring in the high-speed rail. Yeah. Here's the MetroLink right-of-way. Here are your grade crossings. These are existing, this is the existing condition today, where you have grade crossings with your road networks that go over the MetroLink, well, go through the MetroLink right-of-way, essentially. You have the wash underneath it, and you've got some roadway facilities over it. Now go through with high-speed rail. And so, this is a sort of a graphic representation of the profile of what I was just sharing with you on the plan drawings. So the idea would be that we come in at grade, we'd go over Sonora, over to Flower, then back down at grade. The most significant part of what we're proposing here is that Doran Street would be closed here. We wouldn't take it over, we wouldn't take it under, we would close Doran Street there. Our traffic folks are examining that right now. Again, this is just our first blush proposal on how we might get through here. Coming down from Doran to West Broadway, the major issue here is the one street that we would propose taking over, and I'll show you just one concept of how that might work, would be West Broadway. Essentially, all the others, we would be, high-speed rail would be getting out of the way of everything else. So I think we've come up with, at least at this stage, a conceptual plan for dealing with an extensive number of grade-crossing issues, probably in the most efficient and effective manner, least disruptive to the community, that we can, so far, anticipate and imagine. Go ahead. Just to show you that we did, however, look at what would it look like if, in fact, we were to take roads like Sonora, Grandview, and Flower, that I just showed you, we were taking high-speed rail over, and kept high-speed rail at grade and brought those roadway systems over. Because of the height that would be required here, here, and here, you really have to step pretty far back to get up, over, and then back down. And when you start getting into some of the residential communities, we just felt like the impacts were pretty dramatic there, and it was a whole lot easier, at the end of the day, to take high-speed rail up and over that, rather than have this sort of rude intrusion into the neighborhood that would result if we stayed at grade there. Here's an example of the one that we do recommend so far, taking over the high-speed rail, and this is the West Broadway Exchange. Whenever I see images like this, I hope there's engineers around that I can grab and help explain this, if there are any questions. But this is just one concept, one of a couple, I hope, that we'll be developing, to figure out a cost-effective, an efficient way to get over Broadway while minimizing the impact on the adjacent community. Go ahead. And then, lastly, the Chevy Chase one. Again, we looked at how we might do that, with Chevy Chase going over and high-speed rail staying at grade. And because of the impact on existing urban fabric, that was abandoned fairly quickly as well. So in conclusion, the next steps, we are out, meeting with all of the corridor cities, conducting council workshops like this one, with all the stakeholder municipalities. We're conducting interagency meetings and stakeholder working groups. We had one in Burbank last night, as a matter of fact. We have another one coming up the 16th in Santa Clarita. And our goal is to take the 134 to Silmar Alternatives Analysis Document to the High Speed Rail Authority Board on March 4th. Once we get feedback from the Authority Board on March 4th, we'll reconvene a whole series of community outreach and elected official briefings and meetings. So again, we want you to feel comfortable that your constituencies, you yourself, are going to have many bites at the apple. Like I said, one of the first slides that Sarah allowed me to talk from, we're probably 10% of the way into this extensive process over the next two years. Our goal is to come up with a draft environmental impact statement by, oh, Mike, you might have to help me out again, by May of 2011 or so? Late spring? Yeah, for the draft? Okay. With a final record of decision, notice of determination from the Federal Railroad Administration and the California High Speed Rail Authority, sometime the end of 2011, the early part of 2012. So I believe that that's it for the slides that I'm allowed to talk from.
If I may just repeat some of the things that Steve said about the community outreach. We've been working extremely closely with your staff to ensure that we identify the stakeholders within the city who would like to participate in what we are calling this kind of first round, 5% of stakeholder working group meetings. Once we report to our board on March 4th, we will be hosting another round of interagency stakeholder working group and community open house meetings, where the community open house meetings will include everyone, you know, along the alignment that may or may not be affected or may or may not be interested.
And I'm happy to answer questions at this point in time, or kick the questions over to the technical guys who really know the answers.
Okay, well, let me just, there's so many things to talk about, we would be here for hours. I personally have enough questions to... But let me just make this comment. The one thing that I'm particularly interested in, and I think it would be a huge, huge mistake not to link whatever station we build for the high-speed rail, not to link it directly with Bob Hope Airport, the Burbank Airport. I mean, that would be the equivalent of what was done at LAX, where they built a rail system and it didn't go all the way to the airport, so...
We have met with the airport staff already. We are interested in continuing that dialogue with them to see how we might best meet each other's needs and create a win-win for everybody, so that dialogue will continue. We have some alignment issues with, you know, taking the alignment right over to the airport. That's probably not going to work. But there are other reasonably seamless ways to make that connection happen. The airport's aware of that, we're aware of that, and those discussions will continue.
Okay, Ms. Friedman and Mr. Starburt, also in his hand.
First, thank you for coming today and for your very clear and economical presentation. I have a couple of questions. First, the 250 miles an hour that you referenced, is that through the urban core here in Glendale? So where does that begin?
Well, you know, I'll probably defer to John a little bit here on that. But my answer is, it varies, but I'll let the technical guy give you a more precise answer.
The design speed for the project, the civil...
Whoever comes to the mic, we'd like their name and...
I beg your pardon. My name is John Hawley, Pat Motford Donald, part of the, I'm the engineering manager for this section of the project. The civil design speed for the project, that means the speed which we would like to achieve in the future possibly is 250 miles an hour. But currently, the highest design speed that's anticipated for operations is 220 miles an hour. In this particular location through Glendale, we're looking at a design speed of between 135 and 160 miles an hour. And that's really determined by the alignment of existing right-of-way.
So from the beginning of the route that's proposed in San Diego to Silmar, to where I assume you can kind of let it fly, how much time are we going to gain over what Amtrak can provide?
Oh, a very considerable amount of time. The projected time from Burbank to Union Station would be about 20 minutes, no, I think about 20 minutes.
12 minutes. Palmdale to L.A. Union Station is 26 minutes.
So what is it now from Burbank to Union Station?
Well, we've really been comparing ourselves with MetroLink, which provides the commuter service. And just to put into perspective, the current time, say, from Palmdale to Union Station on MetroLink is about two hours. And the speed for the high-speed train service, do you remember the time?
26.
And is that because it stops a lot? If you take out the stop, so your high-speed rail train, I know it goes faster, but you're only going to stop once, right, between Palmdale and Union Station? So what if you had that same MetroLink train and it stopped once? What would the speed be then?
Well, the MetroLink trains operate at a maximum speed of 80 miles an hour because of the grade crossings and because of the track alignment.
Okay.
And will be operating at speeds of 220 miles an hour from Palmdale to a point in the valley north of Burbank, and then gradually decreasing in speed as we get to the less straight portion of the alignment, south of Burbank, and finally entering Union Station at a speed which may be as low as 45, 35 miles an hour.
Okay, so I'll ask you again, with that caveat. If your current MetroLink train from Palmdale was only to stop once, the way that the high-speed train is, what's the difference in time? I failed this part of calculus, so you'll have to forgive me.
Well, I haven't calculated the time that the MetroLink would take, but at 80 miles an hour and stopping once, it would be just over an hour from Palmdale.
So it's approximately then...
As opposed to 26 minutes.
So it's about a 40-minute?
Well, we're looking at for high-speed train is an intercity service, and the time from Union Station to San Francisco will be 2 hours and 40 minutes for the direct trains. Obviously, trains which stop, and not all trains, will be express trains, some trains which will stop at intermediate stations.
Oh, and therein lies a really important distinction, too. MetroLink doesn't have the capital equipment to provide, oh, I'm sorry. MetroLink doesn't have the capital equipment to provide that kind of fine-grained distinction in service types. They run a train from Palmdale, it stops at all of their stops along the way. Where our, the High Speed Rail Authority's business plan has express services, it has local services, it has a range of services that require far more train sets than MetroLink, for example, is in a position to buy, to supplement their fleet so that they can run local or express services. So you get on a train at Palmdale, it's going to be a slow boat because it's stopping at all the stations down it, because they don't make a distinction between local and express services. So, but what I think your comment underscores is the need for all of us to work very closely together so that we're not duplicating services, that we're maximizing the efficiency of existing rail-tranquil infrastructure, and so that we're not stepping on toes and providing overlapping services that might be more advantageous but more expensive, or a service that's slower but less expensive. At the end of the day, we need to get our heads around this whole kind of operating plan and who's doing what with whom.
That's a good point. It wasn't exactly my point. My question was more about wondering whether, given the difficulties of putting the high-speed rail through an urban corridor, as opposed to maybe having a high-speed rail that started in Santa Clarita or Palmdale and, you know, didn't have to go... My question was more about wondering whether, given the difficulties of putting the high-speed rail through an urban corridor, as opposed to maybe having a high-speed rail that started in Santa Clarita or Palmdale and, you know, didn't have to go, start elevating itself however many feet above the ground and dealing with stopping times and really disrupting cities that it goes through, plus the incredible amount of money it'll cost to build it, whether you're really gaining that much time to make, to make it really pencil out, or whether it makes more sense to just start it in someplace like Palmdale, or take it out of the urban core? And I mean, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert, I'm just trying to get a little more information so that I understand the rationale behind this.
I think it's a good question. I would, I would sort of broadly suggest there are things like interconnectivity and seamless connections down to Union Station that might be impacted by something like that. But I think your question deserves an answer, and I think we need to come up with a response to that. And we'll be prepared to do that and sort of pencil out the question that you asked and all of the implications, the times, the savings, and et cetera, and get a response back to you on that.
Or put another way, wouldn't a high-speed intra-city, a more modern, I mean, the MetroLink locomotives are fine, but a more modern high-speed electrical local service from Anaheim, even Irvine, through the urban core, with a connection to a high-speed rail non-stop to the Bay Area, wouldn't that be, make more sense economically? You wouldn't have to do a lot of the work that you'll be doing. I mean, it just seems to me it makes more sense than trying to force the high-speed rail to make stops along the way, all of the different things that you're going to.
I, I think that you raise a number of valid issues, all of which we're going to have to address in the alternatives analysis and the environmental impact statement process. We don't have all of the answers today, but all of those questions need to get addressed as we move this process forward, clearly.
Mr. Weir?
What is your relationship to the Orange Line?
None.
You're both competing on the same orders?
Not that I'm aware of.
Where's the Orange Line running to?
I really don't know. I, I mean, my, my experience with the Orange Line and what I've heard through other parties is that the Orange Line is the old Pacific Electric right-of-way through Orange County and southern LA County. And that's been about the extent of my familiarity with what they've been looking at in the past.
That's right, but there is a segment from Union Station, or I shouldn't say that, from downtown LA up to Santa Clarita. You're right, Pacific right-of-way down there and then--
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing, because I have heard something about that. I've not seen any alignment for that, and our interaction with them has been--
I used to be on the Orange Line, the mayor's on the Orange now, and always thought that you're duplicating services, that possibly the Orange Line should be the urban corridor one, maybe the hubs at the airport or something, because you're not going to get the top speeds you want until you get out of the urban sector. If you started like, Orange Line went to Bob Hope Airport, you had a hub there, and then the high-speed rail line takeoff from there with first stop at Palmdale, you're getting out of a lot of CQ work that you're going to have to do with all these alignments internally. So I can't understand why you have MetroLink, you have MTA, you have the Orange Line, you have the high-speed rail, all competing in the same right-of-way, basically.
Yeah.
And that doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, is the Orange Line still contemplating Maglev?
No.
I don't know, and that's another thing I don't understand, why you're not looking at Maglev, which you have in Europe, and you have in South Korea, whatever.
Don't have it in South Korea, don't have it in Europe. Have one line in China, and they've all been, any, any, there were thousands of miles of proposed Maglev projects in China, they've all been abandoned for contempt, for more--
Well, that's not what I understand. The Japanese railroad system, I think their next generation of trains will be Maglev, so I don't think--
South Korea does now.
They're on, they're on hold right now. Any of the plans in Japan are on hold.
I saw the ones on, in South Korea, high-speed.
The one in South Korea is conventional steel-on-steer, it's not Maglev. The only operating, the only Maglev service and revenue service today is from the Shanghai Airport into downtown Shanghai, and China has abandoned their plans for an additional 5,000 miles of Maglev and gone to a more conventional steel-on-steer technology.
Why are we doing that with the technologies we have? I mean--
The technology is incredibly unreliable, staggeringly expensive. I, I was talking to a group last night, there, there was one example of Maglev in the United States that never worked. It's at Old Dominion University in Virginia.
A lot bigger.
It was built about 20 years ago, they spent millions of dollars, just a little mile-and-a-half section of Maglev is a people mover. It never, it was never put in operation, to this day is surrounded by a barbed wire fence with the, the car still sitting up on the guy, it never operated in 20 years.
Maybe I don't understand the nomenclature then, because I've seen the videos of it in, what I think is Maglev operating in Europe and in South Korea, but I'll go back to my sources and ask, but--
Yeah, there are other technologies we want, that are being proposed and brought forward, we certainly want to hear about that.
Steel-on-steer is going to make noise, just like the ones that are there now, right?
No, no.
They're not going to make noise?
I know John has a good answer for that, because we, we get that question all the time as well, and John's got a good answer for that one.
The, the motive power for the high-speed train, as used in Europe and Japan and South Korea and so on, is electric, overhead electrified, so there's no diesel noise. It's continuous welded rail, so you don't get the noise of the rail joints, and lightweight high-speed train cars, very different from the cars which Amtrak uses. So again, it's, it's less noise, but of course it is high-speed. And the system will have to be designed to the same noise standards that is adapted for other modes of transport, principally for transit, as put out by the FTA and also other agencies which run transit.
Okay, I'll just do some more research on my own to understand.
Oh, the other thing, of course, which we should have emphasized, is that the, the reason for all the grade crossings is that the high-speed train project runs in a segregated corridor, no grade crossings, so there's no horns or bells, whistles at grade crossings, that's not necessary.
The other thing, personally, I guess I'm like Mike Antonovich, I like all elevated. I don't believe there's any safe crossing, foolproof crossing of any at-grade rail line, no matter how you engineer it, you put it at grade, and if you're going at 120 miles an hour, people get killed, not always necessarily on the crossing, they can walk down, go up on the tracks, get killed just as easy. So they're going to underestimate the time to get clear of a train going at 120 miles an hour, so I'm one for elevating the entire system off the ground rather than going up and down through it.
Sure.
And other thing, I just want to make sure I understand clear, my colleagues can shut their ears for a minute, I'm a civil engineer, too. Worked with the Corps of Engineers for 37 years. My first environmental document was 1970, 15 pages long, including the pictures and the table of contents.
Those were the days.
Those were the days. Now we finish at something like the Americana, environmental document was that high, and it took a hell of a long time. We've already heard talk in chambers here that you're going to take a 50-foot wide strip, you're going to take out our historic train station, any projects going to be built anywhere near, forget them, they're taking it. Now, I know my CQ and my NEPA, you're at the very beginning, looking at alternative designs, you've got a lot of work to do before you pick a final alignment with alternatives to put in your documents. I think you're very aggressive and think you're going to have this done next year, because every single city in the whole corridor is going to say, we want ours, stops, clearances, whatever. I can't conceive, based on my experience, you can do this that quickly. I know you've got to have a schedule, but I don't believe it. If it does, boy, that'll, that'll be the day.
I completely agree with you with regards to the aggressive schedule, whether that's attainable or not.
That's being honest, that's what you were given.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I wish you luck, but I still like all elevated, and I wish you and the Orange Line would get together rather than duplicating.
I suspect at the end, before the process goes too much further, there'll be conversations with folks like that.
That would be nice if they, at hub, Frank, at the airport, high-speed takes off, I mean, Palmdale, Fresno, or Bakersfield, Fresno, and up end. How fast could you get there if you only had those stops from like Bob Hope up to Frisco? And people take the plane because it's an hour. If you make those stops, you're going 220 miles an hour, what are you talking, two, two and a half hours?
At, at the risk of hesitating to provide a gas order of magnitude, probably, sure, in that, in that ballpark.
If you want to get people out of the planes and off the freeways and into the train, you've got to make it fit economically for schedules and everything, cost-wise, whatever, what else would they get on the train?
Sure.
So you're looking at all that.
We are looking at all that. We are looking at all of that in the next 18 months.
See you the next time around.
Very good questions, thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, can we now take our hands away from our ears?
I'm afraid I would, you know, it's not popular to be an engineer up here.
Just to be clear, we're not here to discuss Maglev, but the Maglev line in Shanghai to the airport, I believe is 20-something miles, it's not insignificant, and it's carried over 21 million to 23 million people. It's in existence, it works, I believe it was German technology originally. We had that delegation or some people from Shanghai that visited us, and it's working fine. That doesn't mean that it's going to work for 400 miles, but it's something that's currently in existence. Ms. Friedman and then Mr. Najari.
Good point, Mayor, thank you.
Just a quick question. In countries that have high-speed rail, that go into urban areas, areas that are comparable to what we have in Glendale and LA and Burbank, how fast are those trains going through those areas?
Comparable to the skis that John, you know, I was recently on the Berlin-to-Frankfurt high-speed, the ICE high-speed train, and they get out into the rural areas and they really put the pedal to the metal, but when they're, when they're coming into the urban areas, they're probably doing, depending on where they are with respect to the station, anywhere from 100, from 80 to 150 miles an hour. And then they back down appreciably when they get within 20 mile, like when you get into downtown Berlin, the train starts to slow down 20 miles outside of Berlin.
So when they're in Berlin, though, they're going a lot slower.
30 or 40 miles an hour as they pull into the station.
What I'm trying to understand is, it sounds like when you're in an urban area, even those trains, they're going the speed that our MetroLink trains are going, so I still don't quite understand why are we doing this in this area? Why don't we just start it in Palmdale? That's, that's my question.
And, and we'll need to answer that question in the environment, the alternatives analysis document, and then when that leads into the environmental impact document, we'll need to answer those questions.
One last question, I won't ask any more questions. The section--
It's a great question.
The section from Palmdale south through this dense area, what's the price tag? Including consultant and EIR preparation, engineering, everything, eminent domain--
Oh, the consulting price is nothing at all, at all.
Relatively speaking.
I'm sure, yeah, relatively speaking, I'm sure that's true.
Four and a half?
2%, 5%?
We have, we have a, we're back to the napkin estimate.
We're giving a new cost estimate as, as we conclude the alternative analysis and get into 15% design. The figure that was quoted as a result of the programmatic document was 3.2 billion for this section.
For that section, without really knowing how much time it's going to save us compared to a MetroLink train, maybe that goes express?
Well, the focus of the high-speed train project is downtown to downtown, so city center, Los Angeles to city center, and San Francisco. So in order to achieve that city center to city center time, then it needs to be a non-stop, and that is for the non-stop express trains, the trains which stop at Glendale, Burbank, or stop at Silmar or stop at Palmdale will take longer. But the, the through trains, city center to city center, are the focus.
Now, those, excuse me, sir, those trains that you just talked about where they make the stops, ultimately, though, you do go up to the Bay Area, correct?
Correct, yes. Trains will only terminate at Union Station, or some, of course, will not terminate Union Station regardless of San Diego or Anaheim, and at San Francisco. All the intermediate stations are through stations, and each station will have four tracks, two platform tracks on the outside, two through tracks, so that express trains can go through the station.
Mr. Najari and then Mr. Starber.
Couple of questions. We had a very excited developer come before us about two weeks ago, and he had plans for a 20, 30, 40 million dollar project right at the corner of Los Feliz Boulevard, abutting the current right-of-way. Now, what should we tell him? Back off, there's going to be some eminent domain action, some extended right-of-way, or go ahead and build? It's a problem that we have. Of course, you can't answer that, but as--
Yeah.
--as we work on revitalizing some of our more dilapidated corners of the city, especially adjacent to the railroad tracks, we're very concerned about losing some land, as well as losing our historic Glendale train center.
Well, you won't lose that.
We'll just move it.
Just move it.
How many feet do you need?
10 feet.
You get 10 feet, you move a full building?
Okay. And that's all down the, along the length presumably of that corridor?
Correct.
So there'll be some eminent domain, maybe some properties, buildings will have to come down, et cetera.
Yes, there will be some of that.
And I hope you realize that that's pretty disruptive to a community and certainly going to generate a lot of ill will towards their first level of government, which is us, the city council, and, you know, it's, it's hard to point to you guys, you know, you're in, you're not around as often.
We're a little bit ethereal, and we disappear in the--
Right. So that's a concern that we have. Another concern is the, the MTA, in their long-range plan, approved a, in the unfunded section, a Glendale-Burbank to Los Angeles light rail corridor, which, as I understand it, is exactly the same corridor or underlying or overlying the location where, where you're going to be trying to place yours. So I got to tell you that we're very concerned in Glendale, we, high-speed rail is great, but we certainly need a, a short-distance light rail, either a DMU, diesel multiple units, but they're now hybrid multiple units.
Sure.
We'd hate to lose that, so we would be very interested in looking at ways where we can preserve transit on that right-of-way, whether someone's going to be at a below grade and, and the high-speed is at a different grade. That's important, that we maintain that ability at some point to, to be able to connect--
I hear you, and, and we, we agree. And we're cognizant of the environmental documentation that was done for the Glendale LRT project years ago. We're cognizant that it's still on the long-range transportation plan, though unfunded. And I think working with folks like Alex and others at Metro, I, I know Alex is, and others are not going to let us forget that that's out there and that we need to figure out ways to--
We won't let you forget either.
I know, well, yeah, I know. So we're cognizant of that, and, and we think, we think it's important that, again, it speaks to this whole notion of everybody getting together, everybody working on the same page, and figuring out how to develop a win-win without duplicating services, duplicating expenditure of limited, of scarce resources and the like. We're, we are well aware of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Starber?
Couple of things--
And Mr. Weir?
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor. We've, I think we've had at least two meetings that I've been involved in in the past year with Steve and the team, and they've been, they've been very responsive to the concerns we raised at meeting number one that we then heard in meeting number two, which I think was a few months ago, meeting number two. Maybe we can take this up at our next meeting, but I heard here this evening something that, that sounds a little inconsistent with the descriptions we had at the last meeting, which was the height of the railway as it goes north of the 134, which, as you can imagine, will be a tremendous concern to those residents west of San Fernando. 30 to 60, I thought we were working more with elevations of 18 feet or so, clearing grade than, of course, whatever the height is above that. So that's one area. Two that might be of interest is, we've heard a lot of news recently about the 2.25 billion dollars, which, which I understood went to the state. How does that connect with this project? Is, is all of that money about this project, or how does that work?
The, the money was applied for, for three sections, the peninsula, San Francisco, San Francisco to San Jose.
Three sections of this project-- Three sections of this project?
Three sections of the high-speed project.
Okay.
The Central Valley, where the proposed test track is being designed, and then the Anaheim to Los Angeles section. It is my understanding, though, that the money was awarded for the entire high-speed rail project, so that if sections of the projects start to advance faster than others, the money can be allocated to those. It doesn't have to be married to just those three corridors that were listed in the application. In addition, there was 900 million, the high-speed funding was 2.25 billion. Overall, California received 2.34 billion, so that's $900 million or so for railroad improvements in other rail corridors, and I don't know what they are. I would assume there's some Caltrans funding in there for improvements to some of their rail right-of-way and the like. I don't know that for sure, but I don't know what else it would be for. So I think at the end of the day, there's going to be some flexibility with that 2.25 and how it gets applied to the projects that are moving forward most expeditiously.
And the eventual build-out cost?
Oh, boy. I was hoping nobody would ask me that question. For the entire 800-mile section, the number that's in the business plan is about $40 billion.
Mr. Weaver?
That's why if I was a betting man, I'd say the link from Palmdale to Fresno or thereabouts would be the easiest one to get under construction because of the area it's going through. Our metal document would control that. The other, just curiosity and looking at alignments, it's with the core, one of my projects with the rehabilitation of the LA River. And I thought for many, many years, if you want to do high-speed rail, why not use the air rights over the flood control channel? Because it curves from downtown up a pretty straight. You have the high-power lines on each side. Other than that, it's almost a straight shot, and the real estate is already owned. If you wanted to put a parking structure, you'd put near the 5134, easy to park there. A straightaway. Now, where you go from there, if you put a spur off to west end of the San Fernando Valley someday, I don't know. But it just seems that there's a lot less problems there because you do not have residents on either side of the LA River that close, mainly industrial, not residential. So environmentally and from a land standpoint, maybe it's cheaper just getting the air rights. Just a thought. You probably looked at it or
We've had some conversations about things like that, yes.
Just another thought.
Yes.
Okay, I have a couple. Oh, Mr. Drayman?
I didn't catch your name, and I've been asking my colleagues, and they're looking at me blankly, so.
Steve Ortman with URS Corporation.
Okay, thank you. I assume this presentation, I assume you're officially on the road now, so to speak. You're on tour.
You're officially on the road.
On tour, okay. Not a bus and truck tour, it's a train tour, okay. So where were you prior?
Where was I prior?
Prior to Glendale. Where have you made this presentation?
Last night, we were in Burbank. Last week, oh, go ahead. Last week, I was in Santa Clarita while other folks on the team were in Acton.
We are continuing to meet with all of the city staffs and the councils who request meetings, as well as our agency stakeholders, both from the local environmental and transportation sectors, as well as our resource agencies, both state and federal environmental agencies, and the US EPA, and the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as key leaders within the community's business and neighborhood community organizations. So for the past several, few months, we've been meeting with all of the cities along our section, including the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, cities of Glendale, Burbank, San Fernando, Santa Clarita, Palmdale, and then Acton and Aguadolce.
So you've met with those cities, to cut to the chase, you've met with those cities already?
We, our meetings
Cities and the county, I mean.
Pretty much
Santa Clarita's city staff is tomorrow.
But up against the March 4th presentation to our authority board. And so I think our meetings for this roadshow, so to speak, commence on the, end on the 22nd of February.
I'm getting dates, and I'm not getting names of cities. Can you tell me, those are the cities you have already met with?
We've met with all of the cities within our section except for Santa Clarita, and that meeting is Thursday of this week.
Let me try it one more time. Let me try the gentleman this time. What are the cities you've already met with doing this same presentation?
We have met with Santa Clarita, not city staff, Santa Clarita Chamber of Commerce and some elected officials. We have met with the city of Acton. We have met with the city of Burbank. We have met with
San Fernando.
City of San Fernando.
Palmdale.
We have met with the city of Palmdale. We have met
LA.
With the city of Los Angeles. We've met with the county of Los Angeles.
Are these the, these cities using the city councils or staff members?
Largely staff, largely staff. We have met with city of San Fernando, city council. We have met with you now. We have met with
Burbank.
Burbank city council and
Acton.
Acton town council.
Santa Clarita and Palmdale did not want a council workshop.
Okay, yeah. Santa Clarita and Palmdale city councils didn't require a workshop.
So that's three or four? Three or four city councils?
Sounds about right.
Three city councils and a town council?
Yeah.
Okay. And where do your travels take you next to city councils?
You're the public involvement person. I turn to you. I just show up where you tell me to show up.
We're, leading up to the March 4th date, we're done meeting with city councils. You are the last one today.
Okay. So what have the reviews been like, do you think?
Generally good. I would say that most of the meetings we've had with elected officials have been largely like this. Generally interested, generally, my take, generally supportive, lots of questions, lots of concerns about local issues. But generally favorable, but with the caveat that people want to know more information, and they want to know more about the impacts.
Okay. How much of what you hear from the city councils, including this one, do you take with you in terms of comments and
Oh, everything. I mean, we're required to document all of the comments that we receive tonight as a part of our environmental documentation, and we've got to demonstrate that, how we've responded to those comments as well.
How do you do that?
We have people taking notes for all of the questions and comments.
You do. You have your moles here.
Yeah, well, yes, we do. Oh, yeah.
I have a video.
Would you like to introduce them, at least in general?
Sarah, you want to introduce her?
It's Consensus Inc. is that public outreach firm that is part of the team for the Palmdale to LA section. Myself and Caitlin Matias, who's raising her hand, is taking notes. So we, as part of the outreach process, we are required to ensure that we have a detailed noting of the meetings that occurred, and our environmental and technical teams get those notes and incorporate comments into the draft alignment alternatives and station options.
So at some point, the public would have access to that?
Absolutely. After our March 4th meeting with our authority board, the draft Alternatives Analysis Report is posted to our website.
But theoretically, Glendale residents and this council, the city, could see their own questions and comments incorporated in this.
Absolutely. We'll also be, absolutely, we'll also be hosting stakeholder working group meetings and community open houses for the residents and the city staff and the elected officials for the city.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Starburg? That prompts a question. The High-Speed Rail Authority is a creature of state law?
Correct.
So created by special legislation with a board of directors or a board of governors?
Correct.
Can you quickly list who those are? How many people are there? And will they be the lead agency under SEQA?
They will be one of two lead agencies. They are the SEQA lead agency, the NIPA lead agency is the Federal Railroad Administration.
And all that information on your website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I know Kirk Pringle is the new chair of the board, Richard Katz here locally, or Southern California is on the board. Beyond that
So it's on your website?
It's on the website. I don't interact with the board a whole lot just yet, so.
I had a couple of questions along that line. And so you have monthly meetings, more or less, Sacramento mostly, or do you go to different regions?
Well, the board goes, does go to different regions. In fact, they just recently held a board workshop down in San Diego. But in general, most of the authority board meetings are at their office in Sacramento.
So I read in the newspaper, I believe, that the first segment that would be built, the actual groundbreaking ceremony and begin to do the construction, would be from Anaheim to LA Station, is that correct?
Well, yeah. At the risk of having our program management team that oversees me and what I say come up and kick me in the legs back here, that's today's story, and we're sticking to it. But, you know, again, they're relatively early in the process as well. That could change. That's why we appreciate, frankly, the flexibility at the federal level with the ARAM money, so that if our car, this corridor, for example, got traction and there weren't issues with the community and, you know, all of that that we know is going to happen, and so it's a little bit pie in the sky on my part. But other sections could move forward more quickly. But where we are today, given the trajectory of where we think things are going, the Anaheim to LA could be among the first two or three corridors to turn dirt, yes.
Okay, well, and I don't mean to have a regional bias, but yeah, I was quite surprised because quite frankly, I thought the idea was to have urban center, largest urban center, Los Angeles to San Francisco. So when I saw that the first segment would be Anaheim to Los Angeles, that didn't make much sense to me with one stop in Norwalk, I believe.
That's on the plan right now, right?
Yeah, that didn't make much sense. Well, let me just give my final two cents. I'm very supportive. I'm not just somewhat supportive, I'm very supportive of high-speed rail for California and for the rest of the country, for all of these different urban corridors that we're familiar with. And I told the story numerous times, I'll tell it again. At age 20, I found myself in Japan on a R and R from Vietnam, and I wanted to ride the high-speed rail. And I did, and probably within five minutes of that train taking off, I thought to myself, this is great. I'm sure we're going to have it in the US in the next few years. Take a look at me, I'm not 20 years old anymore, 1965. And anyway, I mean, it's just beyond belief that this country has not moved forward with high-speed rails. A few years ago, I rode from Madrid to Seville, and as I talked to their high-speed rail, which is the same as to San Francisco, more or less, two hours and 20 minutes, as I talked to different people, the normal usage or the normal travel patterns between Madrid and Seville were 95 percent air or cars. I mean, there's plenty of high-speed highways down there, 95 percent. It has been reversed completely. It is now 95 percent of train service.
That's exactly right.
So, I mean, this is something that, in spite of all of the issues we're going to deal with, and God knows there's going to be plenty, we need to do this. As a country, it makes absolutely no sense that we can't do high-speed rail between some of these destinations, LA to San Diego and all the rest of them that we know about, Tampa, Orlando, Miami, Chicago, and Kansas City, St. Louis, et cetera. I mean, they're just natural. So I wish you a lot of luck, and I think, as you've mentioned, I think we're generally supportive. There's certainly plenty of issues we're going to have to deal with, including our historic station. But whatever it is, we need to, we need to do it, that's for sure. And Mr. Drayman has just passed some of the members of the board to me.
Mr. Howard.
Or Mr. Howard, an interesting group of board members.
On the screen. On the screen.
Oh, yeah.
That's on the screen, great.
So, well, thank you very much, and we hope to hear from you soon. Don't forget Burbank Airport, because I think that's going to be crucial for this, for this region.
And if I could close, just take one minute to recognize our partner. As I mentioned at the start of the presentation, we've been working extensively over the last six months with our partners at Metro and the city of Los Angeles. Alex Clifford from Metro comes to all of our meetings, shares a lot of insight with us, shares Metro's perspective. And I'd like to introduce Alex and give him sort of the final word.
Thank you, Steve. Honorable mayor, members of the council. Mr. Starburg, nice to see you again. Yes, I'm also here with Susan Gilmore, who is a member of our community relations team, and she helps me in this particular segment. My role at Metro is really to help facilitate the arrival of high-speed rail in the entire county. I work on all three of those legs that you saw today. And as we have learned, there are a number of potential issues and potential impacts and concerns that develop along the way. And so in that role, I'm here to help by listening to those and trying to help ensure that those impacts are addressed, that those concerns are addressed to the greatest extent possible. So that's the role I feel. Now, you've heard today about the draft alternative analysis that's been out there, published for quite some time since June of last year. You're at a point where it would be good to receive your feedback, your staff feedback, and communicate that to the authority based on that current written document. There are things that I've taken some notes today, certainly your historic Glendale station, your thoughts about your grade separations, your Glendale-Burbank light rail line that's proposed in a long-range plan, the location of the high-speed station at Glendale-Burbank, Burbank-Glendale. Those are all things that would be important based on the current written document for you to get your words down, get them on the public record as we move forward. They indicate that there are several bites, but you don't want to miss any steps along the way as you engage those bites. And so that's part of the role that I feel. Happy to be here today. Thank you for the opportunity, and look forward to working with you and your staffs.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I may, just clarify, Alex, the Alternatives Analysis Report that is available online and published is from Los Angeles Union Station to State Route 134. The information somewhat that we reviewed today is from State Route 134 up to Silmar, and that is not available in the public domain yet. It will be after our March 4th board meeting.
Mr. Drayman?
I do have one last question. I'm very sorry, kind of prompted by the gentleman. How many cities, again, are involved in this section that you're dealing with?
Oh, Palmdale, city of Los Angeles.
I don't mean where there are stops.
City of
How many, how many involve cities? In other words, even if you don't have a stop in a particular city, but you're whizzing through?
LA, Glendale, Burbank, San Fernando, Santa Clarita, Palmdale, Acton, to the extent that Acton's organized, and then Lancaster as well.
Silmar?
Silmar, city of Los Angeles, Silmar community.
Was somebody counting on their fingers and toes?
Eight or nine.
Eight or nine. But those are stops, I assume you're talking about?
No, not all, no. They'll be, including Union Station, there'll be four stops in this corridor. Union Station, Burbank-Glendale, north end of the valley, Silmar, San Fernando, and Palmdale.
So basically, you've met with, you've talked to, you've made this presentation for three, at three of the city councils, one-third of the nine cities you mentioned?
Give or take.
And Acton?
Mm-hmm, yeah. That's fair.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
All right.
Ovate C1.
Second. Roll call.
Council members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Thanks, please.
Mr. Mayor, there were actually three cards for announcements, event announcements that I presented to you there.
All right. Why don't we take these event announcements? We'll start with Liz Huerta, followed by Lisa Bubari.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Lizeth Huerta, and I'm a student at Cal State LA. My name is Lizeth Huerta, and I'm a student at Cal State LA. And I'm here to offer the community of Glendale our IRS volunteer income tax assistant program to the community. They're for taxpayers with income of $49,000 or less, and we're offering it on Saturdays from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., first come, first served. You'll need to bring your identification, social security card, birth dates, tax documents, copy of last year's federal and California income tax return, daycare providers, California renters credit, blank voided check. That's it.
Very good.
Thank you.
So it's free, free tax info and services?
Yes.
For low-income residents?
Yes.
And why don't you repeat the location again?
Cal State LA, Los Angeles.
Okay. Any particular, I mean, that's a big campus, where would they go?
Yeah, so we're located in the Salazar Hall.
Salazar Hall at Cal State LA for free tax?
We have requirements that you have to meet, of course, the income limit.
Well, the entire city council meets that income limit. We're not, we're not close to, we're not close to $49,000.
So you can exceed it.
So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa Bubari, followed by Marilyn Gonnell.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Gonnell.
Both together.
And we are doing a joint presentation. So this is Lisa Bubari, and we are both on the board of the Glendale YWCA, which has been in Glendale for a very long time and has done many things for the community. We are here tonight to talk about the Legacy Luncheon and the Awards of Heart and Excellence. And this will be taking place on Thursday, February 25th, between 11:30 and 1:30 at the Glendale Hilton. It's very important, because the monies will be used to support the programs that include and are specific to breast and cervical cancer screening for women who are in financial circumstances that do not allow them to go into regular physicians' offices and probably do not have insurance, which seems to be the way things are going in the society today. And the other program will be the Domestic Violence and Shelter Program, which, of course, is critical. As Ms. Friedman has pointed out, and as Chief Ron DePampa pointed out last week to us at the Police Foundation Luncheon, many perpetrators of all kinds of crimes are going to be released soon and into the communities, including wherever they want to go, which will include the community of Glendale. And it will be important that our program is sustained. And now, Lisa, we'll talk a little moment here about...
Good evening, Honorable Frank Quintero, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lisa Bubari. I am on the board with the Glendale YWCA. We wanted to invite you and the public to attend our Legacy Luncheon, our 13th Annual Legacy Luncheon. And this year, it is going to be at the Glendale Hilton. And our keynote speaker is Dr. Sylvia Whitelock. Our mistress of ceremonies will be Michaela Pereira from Channel 5. And also, our awards presenter will be our own city clerk, Arti Kosakian. We are going to be honoring five excellent women, and they are going to be Sandra Dowdy, Andrea Farcebait, Mary Ann Plumlee, Dr. Maria Rochart, and Karen White. We will also have two youth who are going to be receiving our...
Jane O'Connor.
Jane O'Connor Awards for being an honorable student within our community and in need. Therefore, we are here just to invite you and make sure that our public is notified, because it is a fundraising for the YWCA. Thank you.
Did you give us the dates again and time?
February 25th, 11:30 to 1:30 at the Glendale Hilton.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, please.
Next is action items. At 8, at 8A is city treasure regarding the city treasure's quarterly investment reviews as of December 31st, 2009. And at 8A1 is a motion to note and file report.
Mr. Starbird?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Mr. Barocci.
Are you lending money to the high-speed rail, Mr. Barocci?
I think we'd like to get some of that money. Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd like to present a brief review of the city portfolio. Since we are at the halfway point of the fiscal year, before we, before we get into where we're at, let's take a look back at the beginning of the year and what we were expecting this year. We indicated at the beginning of the year, there was a building consensus that this recession will see a jobless recovery, meaning that it will be a painfully slow return to economic growth and prosperity. As for the city portfolio, it will be another difficult year, particularly as Fed Chairman Bernanke intended that interest rates would continue to be kept exceptionally low until the job market improves. In that regard, it could be a long time before short-term interest rates increase enough to have much of a positive impact to our earnings. Well, that was said at the beginning of the fiscal year. Here we are, six months later, reviewing where we're at, and I can tell you that this office has had no surprises. Interest rates have been kept, kept low. The challenge in the portfolio has been to keep the return on the portfolio as close to 2% as possible. We're looking at how exceptionally low interest rates are. Let me just tell you, this morning, if an investor wanted to buy a two-year treasury note, that return would be 79 basis points or a little more than 3/4 of 1% per year on that two-year treasury note. That's where we're at. Let's take a look at some of our numbers for the last quarter. The city portfolio ended the second fiscal quarter at $476 million in December, up $26 million from the $450 million as of the end of September. Now, we were up $26 million, and over $17 million of that gain was our property tax revenues received in December. Interest earnings for the quarter fell $134,000 to total a little over $2.1 million in the quarter. As expected, the rate of return gradually slipped during the quarter to average 1.94% for the second quarter, down five basis points from the previous quarter. Now, for the quarter, we're at 1.94% for the first half of the year through the end of December. From the beginning to through December, we're actually at 1.96%, not exactly 2%, but close, but not on the nosy. As a point of reference, the rate of return for the state fund, the local agency investment fund, and we mentioned the state fund, because a lot of local agencies in the state of California, if they're small, usually have most of their funds invested with the state local agency investment fund. Larger communities will use the local agency investment fund for a good portion of their portfolio, and will use them as a benchmark. We use life as a, for liquidity purposes. In any event, the return for the state fund dropped 30 basis points to average 0.60% or 60 basis points for the quarter. That is the real world out there. Let's kind of turn to the national scene and market outlook. Indicators for the U.S. economy were, by and large, positive for the last months of the calendar year. U.S. real GDP growth showed a stronger-than-expected 5.7 annual return gain in the quarter. This quarter plus the previous quarter marked the first back-to-back quarterly increases since the recession began almost two years ago. The strong growth numbers confirmed a couple of developments, that the consumer reemerged in the second half of 2009 after being in hiding the previous six quarters, a likely reflection of rising confidence that the recession was ending, the effect of government spending programs, and the very low-interest rate environment. Business-wise, business fixed investments turned positive. This reflected significant rise in spending on equipment and software. However, with unemployment still too high, housing continuing, continuing to sputter, and the specter of more foreclosures ahead, the pace of the recovery will continue to be measured. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks. Certainly would welcome to entertain any questions.
I have a question for you. You have some corporate medium-term notes. You bought them years ago in '07, '08?
Right.
They're returning some nice...
Right.
...percentages there. How, why have you not purchased some new corporate paper like this?
Well, because...
Got General Electric, Walmart, Bank of America?
Well, General Electric has been, has gone under the federal program, and their, their return, because it's all AAA FDIC insured, it's guaranteed, it doesn't return anything. We buy AAA and AA paper. Those companies like Walmart have not gone out to market, and so therefore, it's difficult, difficult to find paper. Berkshire Hathaway went out earlier, I think went out last week, end of last week, two-year, three-year, and five-year paper. The returns, with the rates being so terribly low, you would imagine that Mr. Buffett went out to market because rates are so terribly low. Rates are so low that they're practically sitting on top of, of federal treasury and agency rates, so therefore, he's getting a great return. It doesn't suit our purposes. With, with corporates, we always tried to strive to buy corporates when there was a decent spread and there was an advantage to the, to the city.
Well, even the corporates are very low at this point.
Yes.
Any questions? Nope, okay. We probably need a motion to note. Mr. Weaver? Actually, I have a speaker, Mike Mohill.
I'm just behind Arti.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mike Mohill. Find very interesting, the first comment or recommendation was note and file. Like to know why we do want to note and file. I think we should talk about this report, and all due respect to Mr. Barocci. Market outlook. Indicator for U.S. economy were, by and large, positive for the last month of the calendar year. You've got to be kidding me. Positive? Has our treasurer seen this picture in the LA Times? We don't call them soup line, this is unemployment line, snapshot of the joblessness. Here is 6,400 people showing up for a job. Job losses with the great, job losses from the Great Recession about to get worse. This is new information off the Internet, LA Times or the Daily News. The consensus projection for the quarter is that growth will be between 3.1% and 3.9%. Growth into 2010 is to be moderately positive, with the potential for upward acceleration if the global recovery stays steady. Well, it's not going to stay steady. Headline news, Wall Street Journal, global markets shutter. Doubts about the U.S. economy and a debt crunch in Europe jolt help, jolt hopes for a recovery in the world. Here is off the Internet, spending restraints, graphs. I can't go into detail, I don't have the time. I'm sorry about that. Look at, look at General Motors. Who owns General Motors today? United States taxpayers. This is disgusting. Families, middle class, struggling. It goes on and on. Mr. Barocci, please, in all due respect, don't tell us the economy is sort of okay and sort of nice, it's horrible, and let's be honest with the public. Last time you told us that the recession is over, and it's not over. Thank you, in all due respect.
Over for you, Mr. Mohill.
I can hand my...
I'd have a motion to note and file?
Yes, I may.
There was a motion requiring a second.
Call.
Council members, council members Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
At 8B is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding new agreements, STC1 LLC foreign existing telecommunications facility at freeway park site A. At B1 is ordinance for introduction of the lease agreement with STC1 LLC.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. President, let me go to George Chapchan, Director of Community Services and Parks for staff report to answer any questions. George?
Sure, and, and good evening, Mayor Quintero and members of the city council. Really, this is a, an existing unmanned telecommunications antenna facility at the freeway site A site. The lease was expired, we went back and renegotiated the lease, literally doubled the lease at this point. Also, this would allow them to co-locate another antenna for an additional $500 a month, and all the revenues that go from this will go to the park maintenance section to help maintain the parks. That's, short of it, we have eight of these in our parks, this is one of eight, and it brings in about $170,000 a year. And some of the older ones are coming up, and we'll be renegotiating and bringing those back to you as well. I can answer any questions.
Need someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance at 8B1.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chapchan. The ordinance has been introduced. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, at 9, under hearings, is 9A Director of Community Planning, continued from January 19, 2010 and January 26, 2010. Appeal of setback variance, case number PVAR 2008-017, located at 1149 Cordova Avenue. Public hearing is closed. 9A1 is motion continuing the matter to February 23, 2010, and directing city attorney to prepare findings in support of denial of the setback variance. And 9A2 is motion continuing the matter to February 23, 2010, and directing city attorney to prepare findings in support of approving of the setback variance. And 9A3 is motion to remand to Pub Planning Commission.
Okay, we had a meeting, and the city council reached a deadlock after taking public comment. Mr. Drayman recused himself after further reflection and investigation and consultation with the city attorney. Mr. Drayman has reviewed the record, et cetera, and is interested in participating in this meeting to resolve this matter. And so that is what is before us today, the deliberation among the council members, and specifically from Mr. Drayman, to, who has studied and reflected on the matter, and may in fact have more questions from different participants. What's next, Mr. Howard? What do we do?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you properly know, Mr. Mayor, the matter has been continued now on two occasions. The matter was first heard, and public hearing was closed on January 19. The matter was then brought before this council on January 26. On January 26, Councilmember Drayman indicated his desire to participate and had indicated, as you pointed out, discussions he had with me about potential conflicts of interest and the resolution of that, and desire to review the record so he could participate on, with further deliberations today. In addition, my office was tasked with drafting, or researching and drafting a written opinion on a number of issues, the most important of which is the propriety of a de novo hearing by the Planet Commission. That opinion has been drafted and distributed to the council. It is a 13-page opinion plus exhibits. Certainly pleased to respond to any questions or concerns you have relating to that opinion. Since the public hearing has been closed and the... Since the public hearing has been closed on the 19th, the purpose tonight is for the council, should you desire to do so, to deliberate on the matter. Council permitted to reopen the public hearing for a limited purpose of asking questions for clarification purposes. However, if the council desires to take new testimony and new evidence, the matter would have to be reopened and continued to ensure that everyone who participated in the prior matter and who, on the 19th, and who desires to speak further would have the opportunity to do so. So again, it's certainly the choice of the mayor or a majority of the council to reopen the public hearing for all purposes, or to do so just for a limited purpose of asking questions of either of any of the speakers, I believe I see counsel for the appellant here, as well as a number of staff members here. Certainly would be appropriate, if the council chose to do so, to ask questions of those individuals for clarification purposes, but we would not be taking new testimony tonight unless the public hearing would be reopened for all purposes. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the procedure tonight, the opinion that's been drafted, or any issue in connection with the hearing process, or any substantive issue as well.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Howard, if we want to ask a question of staff, or of you, or of anyone outside of the public, does the hearing have to be reopened, or is staff questioning outside the purview of the public?
Staff questioning for purposes of clarification and the like does not require reopening of the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to get a clarification from staff if I could. If you could open it for that purpose, might make me rethink my position.
Well, no, we don't need to reopen the public hearing.
If you have questions of staff or clarification, you don't need, if you're going to be asking questions of any of the speakers, for example, I would suggest you just reopen it for the limited purpose of seeking clarification. From staff, no.
Okay, open for clarification purpose.
And you don't need it, if it's staff, it's unnecessary.
Oh, okay, staff. Then I'd like clarification on, from our inspector who went out there. As I asked questions last time, Ms. LaRue and stuff, did you see, when the inspector issued this stop work order, she said she was out of town, I believe? I'd like to get clarification since you're the inspector of record.
Mayor Quintero?
Yeah, we need your name for the record and your organization or section in the city.
Mayor Quintero, members of City Council, my name is Renee Sada. I'm the Neighborhood Services Inspector assigned in this case.
What happened the first time you went out?
On February 15, it was my initial inspection, and I issued a stop work order at that time.
February 15, what year, Mr. Sada?
2007, I'm sorry.
Did you talk to anyone at that time?
I believe there was a laborer on the site there, and I asked him if the owner was home. He said they were not home.
Okay, and then what? Next time?
And then I stated, you know, I'm issuing a stop work order, I'm going to post it on the front door with my business card, and then I left the premises and took photos documenting the work that was ongoing.
And the next time you went out?
February 21, 2007.
Was there anyone there you spoke with?
Yes, I believe it was the same laborer continuing the work.
Is there any other times you went there?
Yes, there's quite a few times I've been out there doing follow-up inspections.
Did you ever meet with Ms. LaRue?
Yes, I did.
When was that?
I believe that was February 26.
What year?
2007, I'm sorry.
And you told her that she had to stop, or?
Absolutely. On the February 21, 2007 reininspection, I went back to reinforce the stop work order. At that point, I did have to call Glendale Police to assist me to reinforce that stop work order, and we finally convinced the gentleman to stop and pack up.
What was Ms. LaRue's, your conversation with Ms. LaRue?
We discussed the, what the violations were, and what options she had to remedy them.
What was her response?
What can I, basically, what can I do to have this, to allow this to remain?
And then you went out subsequent to that time, and what'd you see then?
Those subsequent inspections were just follow-up inspections after we notified the owner of the violations to document, to see if they've been corrected or not.
Was the work continuing or done, or?
No, I believe after February 21, as far as I know, the work stopped at that point.
Well, then, how did they get done?
They might have continued, unknown to me.
So Ms. LaRue knew that she was supposed to stop, find a means to make it whole?
Yes, sir.
And other than that, you had no more conversations with Ms. LaRue or the laborers doing the work?
I discussed it on February 26, 2007, and also on March 14, 2007, I met with Ms. LaRue regarding this.
Yeah, but the laborers continued, obviously.
After February 21, I cannot tell you exactly if it continued on what days. I didn't receive any complaints after that date. They might have done some painting, finished work of that nature.
Subsequent to telling Ms. LaRue she couldn't continue, she had to stop, she had to find a way to make it whole, did you have any other conversations with the laborers that were doing the work subsequent to that?
No, not to my recollection.
So she had knowledge of what she was supposed to do, she was supposed to stop and seek remedy, and records indicate there was none?
Correct.
And the work continued and was completed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions you can answer?
Thank you. Mr. Drayman says he may have some later.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from anyone else? All right, Mr. Drayman, did you want to?
Mr. Sada, I'm going to want to come back to you in a bit because there are some clarification I need. But I want to start, before I make any comments or ask any questions, and it relates to a question that Councilmember Najarian asked, which is a very good question. In the process of reviewing the archived playback of the City Council hearing from January 19, and in reading and viewing the associated materials, I met with the city staff, including the Director of Planning, Mr. Higani, Mr. Sada, who you just heard from, Neighborhood Services, Mr. Brunel, and Ms., and Velia, to ask specific questions to clarify issues that are already in the record. And I wanted to get that on the record. I also have a few questions, Mr. Mayor, that I would like to ask, and you may recall that I mentioned at our January 26 meeting that I may have questions concerning issues in the report or on the record for Mr. Los. And I'm sorry, Attorney Los, watching the video replay, it was hard to understand the pronunciation of your name, so I hope I'm not, hope I got it approximately right.
Got it right.
Los, okay. Or the applicant or staff. I don't see Ms. LaRue here, so I don't know if she's planning to attend. If not, then at some point, I'll direct the questions to her attorney. So I am prepared at this time to ask my questions for the purposes of clarity, since I was not here for the original hearing. I have a few also, Mr. Mayor, very short video clips, excerpts from that hearing, which I will, I think will assist in achieving that clarity. I would also like to state once again for the record and for those looking in, that my concern over a potential conflict, financial conflict resulting from the fact that I am leasing a house in the appellant's neighborhood, has been put to rest to my satisfaction in any case. And let me be crystal clear about my question to the City Attorney regarding the potentiality of a financial conflict or other type of conflict. I asked the City Attorney if leasing a house in this neighborhood and being lobbied by residents in the neighborhood to assist the appellant, Ms. LaRue, constituted a conflict. The City Attorney advised me during the beginning of the hearing on the 19th, that he did not think that what I described constituted a financial conflict, but suggested that I could, if I chose to, recuse myself from the hearing since my four colleagues were on the dais and couldn't certainly move forward with the proceedings, and that we could speak about the issue in more depth at a later time. Without a determination from the City Attorney that was absolute, I did what I thought was the prudent thing and left the dais. I met with the City Attorney later that week, and I awaited his written opinion as to whether my leasehold in Ms. LaRue's neighborhood and the lobbying by residents on her behalf constituted a financial or other conflict. His written determination was on my desk when I arrived for work on Tuesday, January 26. And with that in mind and on the record, I'd like to ask my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead, Mr. Drayman.
First of all, I want to say, after reviewing the hearing, one of the things I was struck by was that so few questions were asked at the hearing about the actual substance of the appeal. Person who asked the most questions, and I think the most subsequent questions, and again, this is just my opinion, was Councilmember Weaver. Problem I had was that he didn't seem to be getting answers. He was getting responses, but not necessarily answers. It is not clear to me as to why that is the case, but for the record, I'd like to pursue some of those at this time. So, Brian, if you are downstairs, where Mr. Starbird earlier in the evening misdirected one of the attendees to the meeting, if we could please see the first excerpt of that meeting?
It's a fairly new gate, and it's been taken out to put another new gate in, taller. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, that notion kind of dogged me, and it dogged me throughout my review of the hearing. The existing gate on the stalker side of the property is very similar to the previous gate, which the applicant removed and replaced with the new gate. There must have been a reason. Let's hear the next clip, please.
That thing I want to clarify, which you told us, this enforcement activity goes back into 2007, and there's a whole series of Neighborhood Services going out saying stop work, work did not stop, it continued on.
Correct.
And our policy on this council has been, if you're doing something illegal, we're not going to approve it after the fact. We're going to tell the applicant, take it down.
Okay. Well, I think you're quite right, Mr. Weaver. Since 2007, the majority of the council members on this dais have stated very clearly that we are going to obey our own laws, meaning that if you build something without a permit, you're going to have to remove it, get the appropriate permits, and make sure that, among other things, well, let's put it this way, pilasters and gates, large or small or otherwise, are installed correctly. And when they're at the edge of the sidewalk of any size, they're designed and built safely so they don't fall and kill some other resident or their child. But no one asked Mr. Sada from Neighborhood Services at the time about the stop work order on this project, who he spoke to at the property, and what happened after the stop work order was issued. Did he actually speak to the appellant? What did he say, and what did she say? So we've had some of those questions answered this evening, just a few moments ago, but I'd like to call Mr. Sada back to the podium and like to ask him a few questions. Some may be repetitive. And you've already stated your name for the record, Mr. Sada. So again, when was the first time you went to the site?
February 15, 2007.
Okay, so February 15, 2007, all right. And what did you see there?
I saw work ongoing on the Cordova side columns, where the gate is presently located.
Okay. And you instructed them to stop work, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And did they stop the work on this project?
My recollection is that that day, they did stop. I think I was there on my stop work order, the copy's at 4:00 p.m., so my recollection is that they were finishing up for the day.
Okay. So did you return to the site at some point later?
Yes, on February 21, 2007.
Okay, and had they stopped back on February 15?
No, we received a complaint in the Neighborhood Services office, and then I went back out, and the work was continuing at that time.
And you said in answer to Mr. Weaver that you spoke to the appellant directly at some point about the issue of the gates?
Yes, I believe that was February 26, 2007.
Okay. And what did the appellant have to say about the gate and the other illegal? By the way, there were other illegal structures that had been placed on the property. It wasn't just the gate. As I looked at the materials, there was four-foot-high fence, correct, on the property that was discussed, and there were five pilasters?
Correct.
And four ladder structures, that's how they were described on the plot map, and four carriage lamps, et cetera. Is that right? At various stages until it was completed?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So let me get this straight so far. Prior to the current unpermitted gate, and the pilasters on the Cordova side of the property, a lower gate and pilasters existed. Now, we have something here that we've labeled Exhibit 3. And when I say "we," I mean at the hearing, it was labeled Exhibit 3. So, see if we can find it. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Exhibit 3, okay? Mr. Weaver actually asked a question about this exhibit. Exhibit 3 shows something at the top labeled "old gate," and at the bottom, it's labeled "new." So to ask another question again that was asked by Mr. Weaver at the original hearing, which I don't think he received a clear answer to, Mr. Higani, by labeling the upper image "old gate," you actually mean it was the previous gate, don't you, since there apparently was no record, it's not known when that gate was installed? We just know it was there at some point prior. It was a previous gate. And the appellant indicated that there was, it was there when she bought the house. Do I have that right?
That is, the case planner's telling me that the old and the new gates were as they were labeled by the applicant, and our presumption, and our assumption was that by "old" they meant the previous gate, and by "new" they meant the current gate.
Okay, okay. Thank you. You can relax, Mr. Sada. You've answered my questions. You're there poised at the podium, you can have a seat and relax.
Thank you.
Now to get to the heart of another question about privacy. By the way, there was, somehow we were, in the course of reviewing this hearing, the words "privacy" and "security" were being used interchangeably, and they're not really the same thing, by the way. But in any case, at some point, let's see here, I guess it was 1978, there was a wall that was approved, right? Mr. Higani?
Yes, around the pool area.
And in the staff report, there is a plot map. Do we have the?
Yes, we do. Would you like those on the screen?
Can we pull it up? It'll be easier, I think, than looking at it all. I think it was in color, anyway. Site plan, pardon me. Okay. So in the blue area there, it says "existing wall." That was the wall that was approved in 1978. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that was the, that was a privacy wall, basically. It goes around the pool area. Is that right?
That's what we understand it to be.
Okay, all right. So next to that, to the left of that, as you're looking at this site, site plan, there is a gate on the stalker side. a gate on the stalker side. To the left of the gate, we see something that is, I assume, hedges or plantings?
Yes.
That go around the perimeter of the corner of the property, around up onto Cordova, heads south, and stops at the Cordova gate. Cordova gate, pardon me. And then, on the other side of the gate, the hedge continues down to the fifth pilaster at the southmost part of the property on the Cordova side, right?
Right.
So, so far, we've got that. Let me also ask you, Mr. Hagani, can you itemize the illegal structures that were constructed on the property, which were the subject of violation? In other words, what were the illegal structures? It wasn't, as I understand it, just the two gates and the two pilasters?
With your permission, Mr. Drayman, I'll ask the case planner, who was involved in the original set of conversations with the applicant, to discuss that. Let's give work, Nazarian, the case planner.
Good evening. Thank you. I apologize, my voice is still gone. The original illegal or illegally constructed items that included in the original packet of the application were the two gates, the four pilasters that hold those two gates, and actually, let me use this...
Actually, all I'm interested in knowing is the list at the moment.
Okay. Two gates, two pilasters per gate, so that's total of four pilasters, plus the pilaster at the southeast corner.
So, five pilasters.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, wire fence, which is about three to four feet high behind the hedge, which runs right along the hedge here. Actually, not that far now, maybe. Just this far. On the inside, yes.
Right.
And that... Those were the items or the list itemized in the original application.
Now, who submitted what is in the packet that is labeled... Well, it's not labeled anything. It just says Exhibit 1 at the bottom. Let me pull it out of here. This.
The applicant.
The applicant.
Correct.
Okay. It doesn't have a... It says "site plan" on it, I guess, over here in the middle. It is essentially the same...
Yes.
It's the same site plan. But it has something else on it that isn't on here. It has a legend. And the legend on this... Boy, I need younger eyes. The legend says it identifies the things on the site plan. And it says that there is a wooden gate. Says height 74 inches. A wooden gate, height... Excuse me, 7'4", I beg your pardon. It's a wooden gate, says height 6 feet. There are columns listed. Habra stucco, smooth stucco, goes on. It says there's ornamental lighting fixtures. I think four of them. And then it says number... Item 4, it says ladder 4. What are the ladders?
My understanding was that those were decorative ladders, not permanent structures to hold plants as they grow.
And as the case planner, or you, Mr. Hagani, or Mr. Sada, did anybody see these things?
I didn't see them. Did you see them?
I did see them when I also did go out there.
Oh, you did? Okay. So, what were they made of?
Metal. They seem to be metal.
No.
Steel or something.
So, they're meant to be like a trellis or an armature or something for plants, right? Okay. And where were they placed?
Where? Based on...
Our pictures, but...
Yes. They're on two sides of the gate that is facing, it's like Stalker Street, and I believe there is at least one more on Cordova. I will have to look at the photographs to verify that.
Okay, well, let's do that. Let's look at the photographs.
Do you have the photos on it?
I don't know if it will show. Let's see. There is... That's the Cordova.
That's... Those are there.
That's the Cordova side, too.
That is not the Cordova side. That's the stalker side.
That's stalker, I apologize. Here's one of the ladders, and then there's the other.
There... I do have a photograph that was...
Do we have this in there?
Yes, yes.
This was in the report. Can we pull that up? Whatever that is? It's not...
Keep clicking.
It's the photograph that's labeled "surveillance camera" at approximately 15 feet.
It's a little hard to see in the photo, but that's where they are.
Okay. But there's two. There's one on either side of the gate. And they're perpendicular to the gate?
In this photograph, they are, yes.
Okay. All right. So, those were also part of the things that were placed out there that were not permitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Although, I am not sure if it would require a permit because it's not considered permanent structure, so I don't want to speak on that.
Okay.
But it's...
Fair enough. Okay. All right. On the site plan, there are references, as I mentioned, to these ladders, four of them, and they were... And that was on the material presented by the appellant. Now, these have subsequently been removed?
Not to my knowledge. Have not been removed, but were part of the application when... Actually, after the first hearing, they said we would be removing.
I just want to know if they're still there.
They're still there. But they're proposing to remove them completely. That's what I...
They're proposing to move.
Yes.
Okay.
As part of the proposal.
Okay. All right. Let's see here. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. And if I may, I'd like to turn to Alan Los, who's the attorney for the appellant. Thank you for the correct pronunciation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Alan Los. I am here on behalf of the appellant, Ms. Eva LaRue.
Okay. Do we have... Who is the mayor pro temp, by the way? Just want to make sure it's not me. I think it...
It is Nazarian. Councilwoman Nazarian is mayor pro temp.
Okay. Thank you very much.
He's the mayor.
Oh, there he is. He's back. Mr. Los, shifting gears from the... Some of this issue specifically, I want to make sure I understand you correctly because when you're viewing the video, you don't have the opportunity to say, "What did you mean by this?" Or, "What did you mean by that?" So, let me take a moment. Aside from the process issues that you... I think you itemized about five issues that were of concern to your client with regard to this procedure. They included the process, they included standards review, and it also included issues about personal safety. So, but other than the... Aside from the process issues, you itemized something about the timeliness of the filing of the appeal by Mr. Hagani. You mentioned the... I think you mentioned something about the... One of the planning commission knowing... Having an acquaintanceship with someone. But other than the process issues and the standard review process that you raised, the de novo issue, because I'm not going to comment on the process issues here tonight, so they won't be part of my comments or deliberation tonight. The security issues and the personal safety issues of your client and her daughter were the main issues that you stated in this primary concern, as I understood you. So, let me ask you directly. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. That was one of the basis on which the zoning commissioner approved the variance. And she specifically noted safety issues.
The zoning administrator, you mean?
Yes, I'm sorry. The zoning administrator, and she specifically noted safety issues. Those safety issues are paramount concern for my client, and in fact, caused her to have to move out of the property because after the initial council meeting, the address... Her address was revealed, and her stalker then sent further correspondence, revealing that he now knows her current address.
Just for clarification, was that the birthday card that your client...
This was subsequent to the initial council meeting. So, no, I don't believe it would have been the birthday card.
She had some things with her that she was holding up?
Yes.
Okay. Let me hear the third excerpt. Brian, if you could roll the next cut.
The pilasters, incidentally, are not at issue, as Ms. LaRue has agreed to lower them to meet the code and/or remove the pilasters. But getting back to the underlying reason for the variance request was that this gate and the gate at issue and the accompanying pilasters are absolutely essential to Ms. LaRue's safety. For the last several years, she's been dealing with a crazed stalker who has threatened both her and her young daughter. These threats continue until this day. And the gate and the variance order is her last line of defense, if you will. And so, that was her reasoning for seeking this request.
Okay. So, that pretty much backs up what you just said now. It's your consistent, Mr. Los. So, I assume that, based on your comments there and tonight, that your client's personal safety and that of her daughter are the primary concern. And again, putting... That's putting aside the process issues that you've raised, which are on the record, and the standards review issue that you raised, which is also on the record. So, in your words, there is a crazed stalker from whom Ms. LaRue needs protection. And let me agree, based on the letter that she submitted to the council that night and gave the council an opportunity to read, and I have to say, it's a disgusting letter. The content is disgusting, and no one should have to deal with that. And I would ask Ms. LaRue directly, but she's not here tonight. But I have a couple of questions because you're identifying this as the main issue. So, these letters, your client stated that she received, and she stated this at the hearing, she received 100 or more of them. How did she come to receive them? I mean, were they mailed to her? Were they... How did she get them?
To be completely honest with you, Mr. Drayman, I do not know how they got to her, whether they were mailed to her via somebody else or one of her representatives. I do not have that information.
Okay. So, you don't know if they were mailed to her house?
I do not know that, sir.
And were they... And you don't know if they were emailed, sent to her personal computer?
That I do not know either. I do know that there was a police investigation opened up. I do know that there was an FBI investigation opened up into the stalker. But I do not have the precise details about the methods through which he communicated with her. But I can tell you that those communications are continuing to this day.
Okay. Have you... Well, your client has... And I'll explain in a minute why I'm raising the issue. Your client has continued to give interviews on KCAL and Fox and ABC and NBC and CBS and KNX Radio and other media outlets in the LA area that the stalker sent her a recent note stating something like what you mentioned a moment ago. You know, "Thank you. Now I know where you live." And she held up a birthday card here at the hearing. And it's a lot of press over the coverage of a gate. But let me ask you, Mr. Los, is her attorney, did anyone, you or the police, to your knowledge, suggest to you or to your client that by voluntarily requesting a land use variance from the planning commission and then the planning department, then ultimately going to the planning commission and pursuing an appeal, might engender some discussion about the address of the property in question, which, you know, which she owns? And that appealing the issue to the city council, the third-largest city in Los Angeles County, might put a bit of a spotlight on her and her property?
Well, Mr. Drayman, I can't get into what I may have suggested to her for obvious reasons.
Right.
I can tell you that Ms. LaRue did not wish any of this media coverage upon herself. It was... It came as a surprise. I don't think anyone could have appreciated the scope of the media coverage that would have followed. As you yourself have mentioned, it was over a gate. This wasn't something that Ms. LaRue perceived to be front-page news. Unfortunately, it would appear that in the wake of this hearing, there had been news coverage of this issue. Again, I'd like to stress that she had no involvement in bringing about that news coverage. The media, after the hearing, essentially camped out at her residence and requested various interviews. She denied them for days and days, but they persisted, given her celebrity and given, I guess, the high-profile nature that this proceeding has taken on. She eventually did give comments.
Okay. What I viewed on... With the discussion about the statement you made here, which was "thank you," or words that "thank you, now I know where you live," was immediately following the... Immediately following the January 19th appeal here, the hearing here. All right. So, let's go back a moment, again, because I was not here. Let's roll the fourth and final excerpt.
And in 2007, when you were told you were in violation to stop work, why didn't your contractor stop?
He actually kept working when I wasn't home.
And your client stated that afterward, for reasons having to do with the... Not her, but the worker, the contractor, had some, as she put it, intimidating moments with the neighbors and then ultimately with her, and that she fired him. Do you know when that was?
I don't have the dates that that happened.
Well, it would seem that she wouldn't have fired him before the work was completed because the work was completed.
I don't know that to be true. I don't know the timeline that was presented by Mr. Sada as his first appearance on the property as February 15, 2007. He admittedly did not talk to Ms. LaRue. As she mentioned, she was out of town. His first conversation with her, and I hope I'm not mistaking this...
Actually, Mr. Los, what he... What she said was, it was in response to Mr. Weaver's question, "Why didn't the contractor stop?" She really didn't answer the question. She responded, but she didn't answer. What she said was, "I was out of... I wasn't home."
Well, I believe that would be...
The question is, "Why didn't the contractor finish the work?" And she went on to say that she fired him. So, I'm curious, did she then go and hire another contractor to finish the work?
I do not know this... And what I was trying to get at is, I do not know the status of the work. I don't know how close it was to completion on February 15th. All I know is, as she stated to the council, once she was apprised of the situation, I don't believe that any further work continued.
Okay. So, you don't know when she fired the contractor?
I don't know when she fired the contractor.
That Mr. Sada spoke to?
Correct. And I don't know the status of the work on February 15th.
I know you don't, and you wouldn't. There's no way you would know you weren't there. We do have an inspector who was. All right. She goes on to say, your client goes on to say, on tape, I mean, at the hearing, that it was at that point that she received this onslaught of letters from the stalker, and her words were, at the hearing, something like, "At that point, I just put up the gate, just get something up there, you know? I need something up there." And the current gate went up, she says. So... And by the way, the person we're talking about, the stalker that you've been talking about, why was the FBI involved?
I don't know why the FBI was involved in that.
Well, let me...
Stalker from out of state, or the use of mail, or the use... Stalker from out of state, or the use of mail, or the use of wire transfers, I don't know. The, I don't know the reason for the FBI's involvement.
Okay. But it may have been because, because the fellow was out of state. By the way, do you or does your client know who this person is or have an idea of who the person is?
I don't know who this person is, and I'm not sure.
So you don't know if he's, I assume it's a he. You don't know if he's in Glendale or Los Angeles, or in California, or on the East Coast?
I don't think anyone knows where exactly he is. I think if they did, he would probably be incarcerated.
Well, the question is, though, the FBI was involved. So, I mean, I have to assume, as you assumed for one of these scenarios, that he may not be in California, which is why the, why the FBI might have been involved. Who was first involved? Do you know, the FBI or the Glendale Police Department?
No, I don't know who's first involved. And to respond to, I guess, the suggestion that if he is out of state, that that would somehow alleviate any of the safety concerns, and I would disagree with that 100%.
No, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't make such a suggestion. My point is that it wasn't explained to this council when we were talking about the crazed stalker. That one possible reason why the FBI was involved was that he was not here in this state. So anyway, so when were the authorities first contacted? That is, I mean, the FBI or the police, I mean, the, you know, I don't mean our planning department, I'm talking about the authorities.
I don't know when the authorities were first contacted. This has been going on for, as I understand it, several years. So this has not been a problem that just arose.
Okay, well, is it fair for me to assume that it was in 2007 since Mr. Sada, and we know whether it was February or whatever, Mr. Sada says it's February 15th, that of 2007, and I think he said on the 26th of 2007, February 2007, he talked to your client directly. And, and she said, "At that point, you know, I just need a gate up there. The onslaught of letters was coming. Get the gate up there, get something up there." So I'm going to assume that it was around, it was in 2007. Okay. And again, let me, let me just explain again why I'm asking these questions, and I'm going to move on. But your client raised the issue of personal safety, as have you, as being the primary focus. And you want me, as one member of this council, to, without a court of law, changing the land use law, which says, "I can't take personal safety issues into account in my findings," to consider this as a primary issue? So that's why I want clarification on this. You're asking for something kind of exceptional. There are specific findings that we have to make.
And one of those findings is an exceptional circumstance. I think here you have exceptional circumstances.
It deals with land use, though, Mr. Loos, not personal safety.
Right, and I believe as a zoning commissioner, made all the requisite findings.
I'm not speaking of the zoning commissioner, the zoning administrator, I'm speaking of this council where the appeal is being heard. We have very specific findings, and even the ones dealing with safety are land use-oriented. They go with the land, not the people who live on the land. That's, and that's the point. But I don't want to get into a back and forth with you, I just, I'm trying to get a clarification here.
Well, if I could just respond, I think that was the reason this was not heavily debated at the last meeting that you were not present at, was because the primary issue was the propriety of the appeal and the issues that you've mentioned about de novo versus whatever other scope of appeal there was. And our position has always been that the variance was granted, the findings were made, the appeal was filed.
Mr. Loos, I'm sorry. Mr. Loos, just a little while ago, you said, and then we rolled the tape, and you said up there, that the primary issue was not the process and was not the standard review, standards review, the primary issue was your client's personal safety.
I think the personal safety was about fourth or fifth on my list of things that I talked about. You know, primarily, we were discussing the issue of the propriety of this appeal, which now seems to be somewhat glossed over. And we're now getting into the merits of what happened even before the variance was granted. And I'm happy to address any questions you have, but I believe that explains why.
Well, I think you have, and I appreciate that, and I will move on. Thank you, Mr. Loos. Mr. Agani, fair amount of time went by after the appellant filed her application for a variance. In fact, she didn't file, as I understand the timeline, she didn't file until the issue had progressed to the point that the city attorney issued a letter to her. Is that correct?
That's, as I understand it, correct.
Okay. So how much time elapsed from the time, if we are talking about Mr. Sada's, not his first visit to the site, but his actual contact with the appellant?
About 14 to 16 months. That's what the Givorgnezarian, the case planner, just told me.
Over a year?
Over a year, yes.
Okay. All right. And when the variance request finally came before Ms. Fuentes, the zoning administrator, these other structures, the ladders, the fence, they, they had either been removed or there was the, they were not part of the request, in other words. The fence was no longer a part of the request for the variance. Is that correct?
I believe in the initial round, they were part of the request.
And then after the continuance?
After the continuance, they were then removed from the request.
Okay. You can, you can relax, Mr. Loos. All right. Okay. Mr. Mayor, those, that's the end of my questions, and I thank you all for indulging me in that. I will go ahead and make a comment, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, we voted and-
We'll re-vote again tonight, is that correct, Mr. Howard?
That is, we're hopeful that the council will vote tonight.
No, but I mean, all five of us re-vote again.
Yes, the 2-2 tie was carried to this meeting. The council will choose one of the three options, unless there's a fourth option that I'm not aware of that this council wants to entertain.
All right, well, I want to start out by saying, it is a very difficult issue, and it's a very difficult thing to sit up here and do this. I know you, I know you all appreciate that. It's difficult to leave the human element, or even to say, leave the humane element, some would say, out of this. And this has now been billed as just an issue about a gate. But as has been pointed out by the city attorney, actually, that the personal safety, the issue of personal safety, in examining the legal findings, I can't do that. I can't take the owner of the land's personal safety into account. Whether I want to or not, that isn't the way it works. And I'm not saying that that's necessarily the right thing, but that's the way it is, as far as I understand it. And my colleagues may see it differently, but that's, that's how I see it, that's how I interpret it. We're discussing issues related to the property, not the people who live on the property, with regard to a land use variance and an appeal related to a land use variance. I think that, to be quite honest, if I were living next door to Ms. LaRue, and if we were friends and I had her ear, I'd suggest to her that she was getting very, very bad advice on the security of her property. But I would also suggest to her that she go out and get a permit or a variance and build the gates the right way. And right now, as I say, I believe that she's been given some very bad advice about the security of her property. But the fact is, the appellant was told to stop work. She did not stop work. She continued anyway, and she stated that she simply needed something up there, anything, put something up there. And it was at that point that she began to receive a flood of threatening letters from the stalker. And that's what prompted her to say, "Just put something up there." But there's a problem with that. And I'm not trying to negate the sensitivity of, of this situation with a stalker, but there's just factually a problem. And the factual problem is that there's a photograph in our report, the staff report. And I'm going to see if I can find it. It's one that's dated March 2007. Apologize for not having that at my fingertips. It's a big report. There it is. Okay, at the time that Ms. LaRue is stating that she had this flood of letters threatening her, and that she said, "Just put something up there, just give me a gate," the problem is that we have a photograph that's dated March of 2007. And there are the workers working on the pilaster. And she already has purchased the gate. It's leaning against the tree in the back, in the, and I guess it's the front yard, in the front yard. And she's already purchased the lighting, and the wiring for the intercom is already in. And then we have a photograph that's dated March of 2007 as well, shows other workers that have installed the lights, and the gate is in. And the problem is that when you report the fact that you have a threat to life and limb, and the, and it's reported to the FBI and the police department and all of that, you would think that if your concern is security about putting up the gate, A, you wouldn't have already purchased it before that, and secondly, you'd get it up there right away. But here it is, over a month later, and it's still laying in the yard, didn't put it up yet. So that, that kind of concerns me. It just wouldn't seem to be the action of somebody who senses themselves as being in immediate danger, waiting, whether it's where Mr. Sada said, February 15th, she says she fired her contractor, so apparently hired a new one and instructed that contractor to go ahead with the work. That, to me, is also an issue. But then there's another thing. They put in these metal ladders on either side of the gate. It's cage, these metal trellis structures that go right up to the top of the gate, on both sides of, both on Cordova and on stalker. Doesn't seem like the action of somebody that wants to keep somebody out.
They're electrified.
They were electrified, maybe, maybe so. Maybe they were on slingshots. But the point is, that isn't the kind of structure someone puts in if someone is trying to keep people who are threatening their life out of their yard. And they eventually took them down when they, not when they filed the, the application for a variance, but when it, later, when it was continued, so some 14 months later. It's over a year, those ladders stood there on either side of the gate. That doesn't make sense to me. And remember I told you, when I played the first clip, Mr. Weaver? One of the things you pointed out about the installation of all of this just dogged me and didn't make sense to me. Well, this is why. Then they've agreed to remove the fence. There's a four-foot fence. We keep hearing it three feet, four feet. Let's go by what's on the plot map or the site plan they submitted. It says four feet high. And where does it run again? It runs from the pilaster on the stalker side of the property, around the perimeter of the property, up onto Cordova, turns south on Cordova, goes down to the first set of pilasters of the illegal gate on Cordova, and then continues on beyond that to another illegal pilaster at the southmost end of the property. It's a long stretch around that corner. But they're taking that gate out. So what's the only other thing that's there once they take that out? Some hedges. So all you're left with hedges, are with hedges. And you know what? The appellant said, "The only reason you put the gate up, or the fence up, was so her dog wouldn't get out." So now this, this little gate, this little fence, they're taking out. It's a legal fence, anyway, but she put it up, she's taking it down. All right. Well, I took a stroll over to the property, and you can see right through all the hedges. Once the gate's gone, anybody, anybody, a child, just wandering aimlessly, could go right through the hedges and into the, into the property. So what you then end up having is two sets of gates, one on one side of the property, one on the other side of this corner property, which stand as monuments to insecurity, because they do absolutely nothing once the fence is taken down. So to me, the whole issue of, of the security doesn't compute. I'm not going to get into the appellant's head, or try to, and say, "I think it was for this reason or that reason." But this thing has been played in the media as almost a persecution by city staff and city process for a person who is extremely concerned about their personal safety. And then we're told that we are asked, as council people, hearing this appeal, to put aside the process, of course, put aside the, the standards issue, but we're asked to put aside our findings, which illegally we have to make, all four of them, in order to approve this. Why? For the, the personal safety aspect. And none of these seem like the actions of somebody that's concerned about their safety with regard to, now, I'm, I'm quite sure this property can be secured and that security professionals could do it and could advise. But I doubt they would say, install ladders, metal ladders, on either side of the gate, this gate that you've put up for extra security. I doubt they'd say, have no fencing or no way of keeping people from just walking right onto your, to your property. These hedges simply don't do it. At some point, it's not even tall hedges, it's just some rose bushes and other plantings. So as security goes, I can't even accept that notion. And I don't know what the motivation was, but whatever it is, the installation of the gate doesn't provide the security that, that we're being told it does, let alone placing the ladders and the other issues. So I can't make the findings, and I can't support the appeal. That's what I'm with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Drayman. Mr. Weaver?
I'll be brief. You know, my position last time, but I did not have the privilege of asking our inspector the questions I asked tonight. And as the clip showed, I asked Ms. LaRue if she stopped the workers when she heard from our inspector, and she said she was out of town. Mr. Sada said here tonight, at one point, he did speak to her directly, and the work continued. So who's, where am I going down on? That was one of my factors in my vote, and I'm reversing it tonight. I'm going to take the vote.
Any other comments, Mr. Nigari?
Well, first I'd like to say, nothing I'm about to say is intended to be derogatory to any member of the public, any member of staff, any of my colleagues. I guess two, three weeks ago, when I was making my statements, I was a little more, more vocal than I usually am, a little more passionate than I usually am. I'm usually pretty cold up here on the dais. So I hope that, at the end of the day, we can all go home, friends, colleagues, and be able to discuss the issues, the pressing issues of the city that face us next week. That being said, it would be very easy for me, the easy thing for me to do would be to vote to uphold the planning commission's decision. Clearly, anyone counting votes sees there's at least four votes. There doesn't appear to be any chance that the planning commission's decision would be overturned. But I wasn't elected to make the easy decisions. I was elected to do what I think is right. And I still strongly feel that an injustice has been done to the applicant. A procedural injustice, but nevertheless, an injustice. The planning commission should have never heard this case. The de novo hearing, in my opinion, was wrongly held. "Hey, it's only a gate," the city manager told me. "It's only a gate! Come on, all this, these hours and hours of discussion and heated exchanges with staff and colleagues." and colleagues. It's only a gate." But it's not only a gate. It's not only a gate. It's about our process. It's about our laws and who should follow our laws and processes. Don't look past this issue. Don't get to the substantive issue, the substantive matter at hand with the four findings, because we don't get there. When I used to work in the DA's department, DA's office, there would be cases where someone that you knew flat out was guilty, clearly guilty, wrong. This person was wrong, but they were vindicated because of a procedural error. And we hold procedure very close and dear to our system of justice, and we're sitting, you say, "Oh, Najarian thinks he's a judge." Well, we're sitting in a quasi-judicial role right here. Correct, Mr. Howard? Quasi. It means partly judicial. The appeal to the planning commission, I assert, was not really an appeal. In my mind, I'm thinking, an appeal is a challenge to a determination that one disagrees with and wants to change. And I said, "Maybe I've got it wrong. I must have it wrong. There must be, there must be something else to an appeal." So I went to the Black's Law Dictionary. And basically, it had the same definition in the judicial concept, context, "to ask a higher court to reverse the decision of a trial court after final judgment or other legal ruling." That is not what we have here. Mr. Hagani, in his paperwork, in front of the planning commission and before us two or three weeks ago, clearly stated he only wanted a clarification. And we can look at his, his document that he submitted. Oh, it says "appeal" on it, all right. Big 20-point letters. It's "appeal." What's your name? What case are you appealing? And then when it talks about the issues, what are you appealing? Do you contend that there was a violation of a specific provision of law which forms the basis for this appeal? Mr. Hagani said, "No." Well, it must be B. Do you contend that the board, commission, or officer, referring to the zoning official, zoning administrator, exceeded its authority by virtue of any of the provisions of law given? Answer one. Answer, "nope." C, there's one more chance. Do you contend that the board, commission, or officer failed to fulfill a mandatory duty by any provision of law given? Nope. One more chance. Item D. Do you contend that the board, commission, or officer refused to hear or consider certain facts before rendering its decision? No. So far, it's no, no, no. E. Do you contend that evidence before the hearing officer was insufficient or inadequate to support its action, determination, or ruling, or any specific finding and support thereof? That's where you get into the four findings of the, of the zoning variance. Nope. Mr. Hagani said, "Nope." We get to the last one. Do you contend that you have new evidence of material facts not previously presented, which, if considered, should change the act, determination, or ruling? Yes. Mr. Hagani knew, he better check something on this form, and he checked yes on that. Well, if yes, state each new material fact not previously presented to the hearing officer. For each fact, state why it was not available, or with the exercise of reasonable diligence could not have been discovered and previously presented. And Mr. Hagani says, "This appeal is only to request clarification with regard to the Now, it's on the appeal form, so it must be an appeal, right? But if he typed those same words on a city letterhead in the office of the planning director, we wouldn't be here today. And assuming he would pass it on to the zoning administrator, he wouldn't be here today. Mr. Howard, the doctrine, the judicial doctrine of substance over form, I think, must be applied here. What matters is what the relief Mr. Hagani was looking for, not what form he put it on. He has no objection. He has no appeal. He has no decision that he wants changed. He has no decision that he wants reversed. At the planning commission, he said, "All I want to do is clear up some confusion. I want some clarity on the zoning administrator's decision." I don't know why he didn't submit this request to the zoning administrator directly, like Mr. Schrader did. Mr. Schrader wanted some clarification. He wrote a letter directly to Ms. Fuentes. How can a member of the public, presumably not very well-versed in the ins and outs of City Hall, be able to write a letter requesting clarification, and our own planning director not be able to do so? I don't think this was an appeal he submitted. I think this was a call for help because the situation was such that he could not approach our zoning administrator and work things out, instead of going through the formal routine of, of bringing it before the planning commission. Why didn't the planning commissioners ask why the applicant could not make it to the hearing? I watched the tape. No one seemed to care. Yes, they acknowledged a letter had been in. Yes, they acknowledged, "Well, it's too late. We've sent notice out." But on the city council, at least, at least once a month, we put over items that we've already noticed. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're here for item eight, we just want you to know that we're continuing it to next week. It's a common, common occurrence. Wasn't this the first request for a continuance at the planning commission level by the applicant? Why were there only four members of the commission there? It shows four members, doesn't show any absences. Now, in a de novo hearing, Mr. Howard, the burden of proof is on the applicant, correct?
Depends on the language and the code. For example, in the city council, it's a little unique.
At the planning commission?
Normally with variances in CUPs, the, in most agencies, the burden of proof is on the applicant seeking the variance or the conditional use permit. In Glendale, on appeal to the city council, the burden rests with the appellant, somewhat unique. But that's the language, at least, for city council.
Okay, I'm talking about the, the planning commission, referring to the planning commission.
On the applicant.
And the applicant wasn't there. So the person who has to carry the burden of proof has to make the case, but that person isn't there. This was a slam dunk case without the applicant there, for whatever reason. Should they have been there? Oh, yes, they should have. Is there someone's name in the, in the record as being there representing the applicant? This was an errand boy they sent with his shirt tucked out, his shoelaces untied, no offense to the gentleman. Obviously, his first attempt to, to be, no, not Mr. Los, not Mr. Los. Look at the tape. Confused, he's there, obviously. Someone gave him a note, "Go to planning commission, ask for a continuance." And, and that's all he did. When it came time to speak, he didn't, he didn't get anywhere near that dais. He, he ran back to his seat. That guy was frightened as heck. What's the judicial doctrine on default, Mr. Howard? Equity abhors a default, something like that?
Well, if you're talking about default judgments, you still have to prove them up. So I'm not exactly sure what the question is. I mean, if we're talking about default judgments or defaults, there's a need for proving. Talking about good cause for continuance, that's in the sound of.
Generally, defaults are, are disfavored. I mean, that's my understanding.
Well, if you're talking about defaults or failing to answer, they're in fact, legislature's taken steps to ensure that you provide notice.
Well, this would be a failure to answer because there's no one there to, to carry any, any weight on the case.
Yeah, I'm not, with an administrative body, the, the analogy may, may or may not work, but I think, I understand that default you're talking about is failing to answer.
I, I did read your, I did read your opinion. It seems to be hinging on a, on a memo, a purported memo from the city attorney, unsigned, unnamed, dug up, unauthenticated, deep in the bowels of City Hall. You said, "I feel sorry that you had to go down there to, to dig that stuff up." I don't know what that is. I don't know if that's in our, you know, incorrect statement of law memo box or in the correct statement of law memo box. What matters here is our ordinances. It is our, it is our ordinances. Title 30, Chapter 62, Point 050, only the word "appeal" is used when we talk about bringing it back to the planning commission. No whisper about de novo. When the city council wanted a de novo appeal, Title 2, Chapter 88, Point 090, says in flourishing language, "The council appeals shall be de novo, and independent examination of the matter shall be made." When the city council wanted de novo appeals to be made, they put it clearly. When they wanted a board, in this case, the city council, to hear de novo, they wrote de novo. On the planning commission, it's silent. The only fair assumption that can be made, that can be drawn, the fair inference, is that issues before the planning commission are only related, know those A, B, C, D, E, F that I just went through? Related to those issues. Now, we don't see it very often because typically in these appeals, boy, they check every box and they say everything was wrong from, from when the paper was filed to the type of ink that was used, the wrong font, the wrong decision, wrong facts, wrong law, the whole thing. But this is a different case, and we shouldn't just knee-jerk assume that it has to be a de novo ruling. The fact that it's been done this way since Mr. Howard was a city attorney or our city attorney from 1969, I think Richard Nixon was picking his cabinet at that time, Mr. Howard. I think, but I think Mr. Quintero was back from Vietnam. He was, he was just getting off those high-speed rails in Japan.
And I wasn't, and I wasn't born.
This is why, this is why, for all these reasons, it's just completely unfair. I'd like to bring up Edith Wennis.
Mr. Mayor, when's this gonna end?
Four minutes of Najarian and about 20 minutes of Drayman? Please.
Four minutes? You've been on for 15, 20 minutes already on a legal matter, and that's not what we're here for.
If you'd like to leave, Mr.
I'm going to leave. In 13 years, this is the worst hearing I've ever sat on, from beginning to end, and you're ending it. And you know, we take those.
Mr. Mayor, I have the floor, and if you could please keep order.
We're gonna take those gates down, and the people in the community are gonna walk up and look between the hedge at the House entrance, and then they'll turn around, "Oh."
I believe I have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Good night. Oh, I gotta vote. Call the question or something?
I have a few questions.
Oh, my God.
Just a few. I'm not gonna go 10 minutes.
Go ahead.
Ms. Fuentes.
Twenty minutes.
You seem to be somewhat at the center of this, not entirely at the center of this. Now, you made a decision on May 12th, 2009 regarding this prop, this setback variance, correct?
Correct.
And you had to put those thoughts in writing, the decision in writing. Did you do that all by yourself? Were you assisted by any staff members from any department in preparing those, those decisions, that decision?
Well, I consulted with Mr. Garcia on some of the wordings that I used for.
This is the wording that needs all the clarification. You mean our city attorney helped you and our planning director didn't understand it? You don't have to answer that. Let me ask you this question. Would you please, for all of us, clarify your decision in clear terms as to what you meant on your May 12th, 2009 decision regarding the property on Cordova? This is what should have been asked you at the water cooler. This is what should have been given to you by an inter-office memo. No one has asked you that. I'm gonna ask you. Please clarify your remarks. And Mr. Hagani, I want you to listen. If there's any confusion, we can make sure she answers it to your understanding.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the only item that I approved on this variance application was the two gates. And I also made it very clear that on the pilasters, that they will be lowered to less than five feet in height to comply with code. And the applicant who, who represented the case agreed to do that. That's why in the front or at the very front of my decision letter, there's a note in there that clarifies what will be happening or what should be done with the pilasters. Less than five feet in height, that's all.
Mr. Hagani, is that okay, or do you need some?
Well, so far, so good. What you did not, Mr. Najarian, mention was the attachment to the, to the appeal form that I submitted. The reason that I submitted the appeal was not the decision itself, but the clarification letter that the zoning administrator followed the decision with, in which she actually said something that did not, not only was, was to be interpreted as a contrary of what she just said, which, which, which also blurred the decision. And that was a pattern that needed to be addressed. What she wrote in her letter was that the pilasters were part of the decision. That did not explain whether or not the pilasters were approved or whether or not they were not, whether or not they were, they were not a part of the approval. What, she did say they were part of.
I don't blame you. I'm not blaming you, but now I wanted to be clear.
That is a lack of clarity. When you have the zoning administrator sending a letter after the decision has been submitted, a decision that was a result of a public hearing, and the, the letter that follows, which was not part of the, the public hearing, seems to expand her decision, that is a matter that needs to be addressed in a public hearing, not through, and by the way, that letter was a result of a water cooler conversation that I asked the zoning administrator to send because a number of the members of the public wrote to me and called me, and they said, "We do not understand the decision." I asked the zoning administrator to outline her decision so that the members of the public could understand what was approved and what was not approved.
Whoa, whoa, that's not what you said last time. How many, what members of the public spoke to you when they asked you to appeal it?
Association in the neighborhood who asked, who sent me a letter, who sent me an email saying, "We do not understand the decision." There was an email from a resident who said that she did not understand the decision. And then there were phone calls that, there were messages left on my voicemail that they said that they did not understand the decision. I read the decision after that, and I, and I read the decision and I read the findings. And I have to tell you, when I read the findings, the findings were, were not written in a way that I wouldn't, would have written the findings. However, out of my, out of, out of my respect for the zoning administrator's independent decision-making authority, I was not about to challenge her rationale in making the findings. However, I thought it was very important to make sure what was approved and what was not approved. Therefore, I appealed the decision.
She had the city attorney for help, Mr. Hagani.
I will, I will not speak for the chief assistant city attorney, Garcia, here, and he is here to answer to what extent he looked at the DA's draft decision.
But that's all passed.
Is this within the scope of what we can discuss?
The question is.
I know.
Well, she's certainly entitled to clear. This is what the appellate wanted from day one, and I'm trying to get that clarification, Mr. Howard.
I, I don't have a problem with seeking clarification. I mean, in my view, all of this is completely irrelevant because, as we've noted in our opinion, one, we're talking about the zoning administrator's decision, two, we've got a planning commission decision that now intervenes that, and now we have a council that's about to decide based upon a de novo review of what the decision is. So I'm not sure how what the zoning administrator did is relevant to the decision here.
Come on, it's a 4-1 vote. Let me get this out for the record.
It's not my call.
It's a 4-1 vote. I'm not deluding myself that I'm convincing anybody. We might lose Mr. Weaver. It might be 3-1 in a few more minutes. I just want Ms. Fuentes.
You're wrapping it up.
This is the last thing I'm saying. Did you hear her comments? And does that, in your mind, clarify the May 12th decision?
This does now.
Thank you. Nothing further. You might as well go for it, unless someone else wants to chime in.
Mayor, you never opened up the hearings. Mayor, you never opened up the hearing, did you?
No.
Can I make a motion?
Well, wait a minute.
Before midnight?
Do you have-- No.
Well, I don't want to drag this out. I'll be really brief, but I understand your concern, Mr. Najarian. I don't share it. I think it's, we have, you know, I'm sitting up here with two lawyers. You're a lawyer, and we have our city attorney. And our city attorney specializes in interpreting the city charter, interpreting the codes, and advising us on process. And he's written a very long opinion with lots of references to other, to case law, to things in the code, and his opinion is that nothing improper was done. So what choice do I have but to go along with that? I'm certainly not an attorney. I'm not gonna second-guess that. I looked at it. It looks very well reasoned. I don't think that he has any agenda here either side. I think he's neutral. I think he's just interpreting the rules as best as he can. It also seems clear to me that, I mean, Mr. Hagani, just his explanation really clarified some things to me about what happened. I think what he was trying to get at was not so much clarification over the height of these pilasters. It was that he thought that the hearing gave an approval for one thing, and then when it was actually written up, something completely different was in there. And I think he did the right thing at that point to send it to the Planning Commission for clarity. And at that point, I think people did know what was happening, and it's pretty common that someone will appeal on one basis and on one grounds, and it'll go in front of a commission, and they'll make the decision based on something else, and we don't say that that's improper. So I don't have a problem with that. And with that, I will move nine--
Excuse me.
You tried two.
I would just like to ask a clarification from the city attorney, because I really don't, I really don't want to get in the middle of legal points between two attorneys, both up here on the dais. I guess I'm literally, physically between the two. But I do want to ask a question of the city attorney. Mr. Howard, I think part of this is, and Mr. Najarian has made the point, that if the code is silent on the issue of de novo with regard to the Planning Commission's You've cited case law and so on in the opinion that Ms. Friedman points to, but are there other examples where the municipal code is silent about something but case law and precedent and law beyond our, or even laws or issues beyond our municipal code come to play?
Well, not only our code, not only our charter, but also state law. You cannot pin down every conceivable procedure anywhere, and that's why you have certain maxims in the law for statutory interpretation, including that the standard and practice that's been occurring over a long period of time is entitled to great, by those with the authority to interpret, is entitled to great weight unless clearly erroneous. You have a host of maxims. There's a number of areas where it's silent, and that doesn't necessarily mean you can't do it. And that's why you have to look at how the courts have interpreted those types of things, and that's why in the opinion, we note that the fact that there, the general rule in California is that for administrative hearings, silence generally connotes that it's a de novo review. It's essentially a hearing anew. I can't sit here and give you the examples in the code where there's a lot of areas that are silent, but it's, whether throughout history, things have changed through technology and the like, codes then have to be interpreted, do they apply to that? Even though at the time that it was written, it may not have, that technology may not have evolved or something of that nature. It's somewhat elastic, I think is the phrase that's used relative to the interpretation of both our state and United States constitutions, that it has to be elastic to be able to address issues that come up in the future. In this case, all I can really point to is the situation involving the research that was done related to the procedure for hearings for administrative bodies.
Make a motion now.
Make 981.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, for myself, I stated the reasons I would uphold the Planning Commission's rulings a couple of weeks ago. Nothing has changed to persuade me to vote otherwise. Any other comments? Roll call. Mr. Howard, is he allowed to make a statement?
You're ready for the vote. This is, the public hearing's been closed. It's the discretion of the mayor.
Yeah, the public hearing's been closed, sorry. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Nope.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next, please.
Um, new business notwithstanding? Is there any new business?
I think there is.
Yes.
We can take that or go to oral communications at your discretion.
Oral communications.
All right. In that case, we return to item number six, which is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
All right. Mike Mohill.
He's gone.
Mohill is not here. Margaret Hammond, followed by Carol Welling.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. Boy, that was a lot of words going around and around. And I'm not saying, I'm only saying that I have been the victim of threats and phone calls and had my property damaged all because I had an opinion here at City Council and was followed home and, you know, had my problems. But, and it's not easy, but then you just say, well, you know, hopefully that some way you get through it all, and that's what you do. I live alone, so I mean, you know, what I'm saying is, it is hard to be in that position. But you can't let life stop you. The one thing I would like to say is, on bulky items, there are a lot of them appearing again around town, and I know Mr. Zerns and his department are overwhelmed. You've got 10-ton boulder in the middle of Ocean View to worry about, so that's what I understand, so to worry about bulky items. But it is, you know, they get wet and garbagey, and so that's why I keep saying, "Call the number, 818-548-3916." The River Walk meeting is going to be February the 18th at 7:00 p.m. at the Pacific Community Room. We need hikers and we need bicyclists that want to enjoy this park, and we already have the Equestrians on board, believe me. We want to, and this park can be a park for a lot of people to use, not just one group of grandparents or little kids or whatever. It's going to be a family, a family use for people. Not only, it'll draw in from outside into our city. People will love to come there. It's gonna be great. And you know, the other thing right now is getting back to what's happening with rain and so forth. If you live in the city where it's not affecting you, but, you know, our neighbors up in La Cuyatara, they need our help, the ones that are really in trouble. I have some friends whose homes, they're in pretty bad mess up there. And, you know, we help other countries and other states and other places. We ought to remember our own neighbors. They do need help too, and they need support. It must be really terrible to lose everything, and there you are, living in a tent, really. So when we think about it and we have a way of helping them, I don't know if there's any agencies that are doing that, but if there are, I wish we could make an announcement, you know, of our, for our local people to help with the families up there. So thank you very much, and--
Thank you. Carol Welling, followed by Lila Ramirez.
Good evening, Carol Welling, member of the city. I want to draw to everyone's attention tonight the fact that when this Cordova thing came up, I was, I spoke a couple of weeks ago, and I want to tell you what's happened to me, the consequences of my supporting the city attorney and the commission. I received a two-page letter of filth, pornography, and hate mail. It is totally beyond filth, pornography, and hate mail. Strangely enough, the only city council member who received a copy of this is Arun Najarian. Now, this was sent to me by the director of Vanguard or Vanguardians, whatever they call themselves now. And so I went online, and I found some of the information about the director of the Vanguard. And one of the pages here, this filthy page, has a picture of four behinds, and it says here, this is his website, it says here, "Guess which asshole called?" I'm putting this in the record. Here's another one. A picture of a person with their head up their ass. Now, also on this website, it states here very clearly, "Update as to January 1, 2009. Arbod was also appointed the director of Vanguardians, a privately-held 501(c)(3) nonprofit that advocates government fiscal accountability and transparency. Arbod writes, "Weekly column in Vanguard, a publication that is distributed to thousands of readers weekly. People better be concerned about their emails. I have had a computer tech at my house today, all day, because now I have a worm and I have a virus. So what am I to do? I immediately called the police. There's a police record, and I will be seeking a restraining order, because this person has my name and my address and my email." Then I have, I've asked for some information, because I'm going to file with the IRS and find out why this particular institution, or whatever you want to call it, has tax exempt. And then I'm asking, and this is already in progress, I've asked the city staff here to provide me with every request that Vanguard has made for the last three years, because they are burdening this city with inquiries. It's abuse of the request for public records information. It's creating a burden. It's creating a hardship. It's misuse. It's taking advantage, and it's exploitation. And I'm going to take it all when I get my packet together, and I'm either going to take it to the state. Senator Carol Liu, which is here locally, and she knows possibly, there has to be some way to stop this abuse. Now, I know that the legislation was well-intended, but they are burdening the city. I've been talking to various people in the city about the number of man-hours that are involved here. There's actually one person on the city staff, the attorney's staff, that that's all that she's doing now, just getting these records that they demand and then they don't even look at. I think that's about it. The last thing I possibly will be doing is filing in small claims court. This is libel. I want you to read this filth that was sent to my, oh, it was not only sent to me, it was sent to the city manager, and it was sent to the public. Beware of Vanguard.
Thank you, Ms. Welling.
Thank you.
Lila Ramirez, resident, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff. I just want to say, Carol, I am so sorry that you had to read that awful letter. And I have to tell you that Carol didn't receive that letter. It's addressed to her, but it was sent to everybody else. When I read it, it was, I couldn't believe it. So my first inclination was to send it to the police department, but I thought I better call her first. I was amazed she hadn't received it. Everybody else had received it. I received it, but she did not receive it. So we filed with the police department. Although hate speech is protected, hateful and abusive behavior is not. The reason why this man decided to insult, abuse, is beyond the pale. It not only affects her, it affects me, it affects every woman in this community. This man has no regard for women, no respect for this community, and no sense of decency. His behavior should not be allowed to continue. This is not the first letter that went to Carol. This is the second, and they're both obscene. Hate, well, the man can say whatever he wants, hateful or not, but he crosses the line, and he should do the time. He can't, he cannot be allowed to walk this community with that mentality. The man is an egotist, a sexist, and an abuser, and he has to be stopped.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Peir, and I'm here to talk about solar energy. And I hear and read a lot about Glendale supporting solar energy, but when I'm on the street, I don't see solar panels in Glendale. We get about 50 to 100 solar systems installed in Glendale each year with a city of 200,000. That puts us on a thousand-year plan to get clean energy in the city. I'd like to show how difficult it is by going through my own story about my unsuccessful attempt to get a solar energy system here in Glendale. Back in April 2007, I got a quote for a rooftop system for my house. It was about $20,000. I was gonna get about $10,000 in rebates. Seemed like a pretty good deal, but it didn't really seem right, because my roof has a lot of odd angles, and it looked really pretty ugly on it, because panels are always rectangular, and also really didn't like having that many holes drilled in my roof. I noticed some parking lots have solar systems overhead, and I was in Germany, I saw all kinds of different solar systems there that weren't on rooftops. So dawned on me, there's probably a better way for my property to get solar system. And then I looked at my garage, and I said, hey, you know, I've got a nice spot there, I've got a patio. I could put the solar panels above that. And it's actually considerably harder than doing a rooftop system, but by December 2007, I selected an architect to design that, and I found a contractor who looked to be capable of building it. And then by July 2008, we had selected one of many design options we went through that looked good and was solid, and we had a structural engineer complete the details to make sure it was safe, and including 100 mile-an-hour winds, I don't want this thing coming off. I'm an engineer myself, and I want this thing built right. So we completed all the electrical plans, including changes to our old electrical system that were required by Glendale Water and Power, and that took until October 2008. Glendale Water Power signed the interconnection agreement, or it was executed, as they call it. So basically, I had proven I move ahead. At that point, we thought we were weeks away from beginning construction. But Glendale Planning refused to even accept our application. That was on the same day, October 6, 2008. So we went back and forth trying to figure out what was going on. October 21, 2008, I described the system to Chris Baxter in Planning. He said zoning has nothing to do with solar electric. Just get our permit from building, and, you know, maybe somebody was confused. That was, you know, just some misunderstanding or something. And he said, if there's a problem, just, you know, get back to him. Well, so we went in, our contractor went into Jan Bayer, and he's a building plan checker, and he sent him to Chris Baxter again, back to zoning. So I talked to Chris. He had changed his assessment now. He says he didn't realize the structure was elevated, so he rejected it. And the problem was that, first of all, if it wasn't elevated, it wouldn't be in the sun, because the roof is essentially shaded by the neighboring garages above ours, so. And he said, because the solar system has a secondary purpose as a patio cover, he rejected it as a patio cover, because it has inadequate setback. Well, our entire neighborhood was built with the setbacks we have, long before the zoning was made for that, but, you know-- was, was made for that, but you know, I guess that didn't matter. So anyhow, I was aware of state laws prohibiting this kind of action. And you can't apply aesthetic rules because solar systems are considered to be more important by the state than, than aesthetics. So I thought I would contact the city attorney. Well, okay, I'm getting close to running out of time. I'm not going to go through all the city attorney stuff that's happened over the years. I can get into that in another session where I'll contrast the state law and statements from the attorney, the city attorney. But I would also like to point out that Mike Garcia and I both have this letter right here, written by Deborah Sloan, Deputy Attorney General for the State of California, which refutes all of his claims about the legality of Glendale's actions. They asked for action on this, that we correct the zoning in Glendale. This has been done, requested many times through legislature. And now I have a letter here from the Attorney General's office saying exactly the same thing that I've been saying.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peir. Ms. Friedman?
I know it's been a long meeting, but I did want to just respond quickly to Mr. Peir. I am very sympathetic, as he knows, and think, and I've seen his plans. And I think that he should be able to build his project. However, I also believe that there is a process that has to be followed. And the reason is because this isn't a simple solar system. This is taking a garage which has no setback and putting basically living space on top, putting a patio on top with a trellis over it. The trellis doubles as a solar system, which is great, and I think it should be allowed, but you still have to go through the process of getting that approved. In your particular case, I don't think it's going to be difficult to get a variance, but in someone else's case, it might be. And that's why there's this zoning process, because you may have a different situation where you have someone who has a non-conforming something, garage, structure, where having that system on top or creating this new use of an outdoor patio might be a problem in that neighborhood or might be opposed by the neighbors. It's not the case, I don't think, in your site, but it might be in someone else's. And that's why, because your system is not only functioning as a solar system, it's becoming not only a new structure, but creating a new living space where there was, where there is none approved. It needs to go through that process. You know, and, and you know, I, I think that there's a lot of sympathy in, behind this dais and at the city. And I think a lot of people want to help. I don't think that the city is trying to obstruct this at all. It just wants to be sure that we don't create a precedent where someone comes back and says, well, I know I don't, I'm not, we talked about this before, saying that they need to put, let's say, a second story on their house to put a solar system on top because otherwise it would be in shade or something along those lines. We just need, as we move into this new technology, to have some checks and balances on it. I hope that you pursue this and I hope you get a variance and get your solar system built, because I think it would be an asset to you and to the community, but it needs to go through that process. And in terms of Ms. Welling, I'm really sorry that you got that email and that you're going through this. There are definitely hateful people in this community and it's, it's really a shame. And I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Najarian?
I also want to apologize to Carol for what she received. I did get an email. I did not read it. Had nothing to do with anything that was contained therein. Mr. Peir, getting a variance might not be as easy as it sounds. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Welling, Mrs. Welling, I also read the email. It's unbelievable that someone would, would do that. And absolutely, he is part of the Vanguard nonprofit. I'm happy to hear that you're taking steps to see what that organization's all about. And then to Mr. Peir, I've driven up to your house and I think it is an appropriate place to have a solar, but you've got to go through the, through the channels, I guess. Mr. Freeman?
Well, just to echo again to two speakers, Ms. Welling, unfortunately, there are a number of, how shall I say it, bullies in this community who are, who take liberties and they also sometimes double as con artists and everything else. It seems that they, they seem to coalesce around this one organization time and time again. So I apologize for you, to you, for them in a sense, because I don't think they're ever going to apologize to you. That's inappropriate. And it's interesting that same organization would criticize people on this dais for having a disagreement during a debate. And yet they will take you on in such an obscene way for having the same kind of difference of opinion. And, and you're not an elected official either. So that, that just really strikes me. I hope you are successful. You know, the, what you point to is the individual you were mentioning writes a column in Vanguardians, as does Mr. Milano, as, as do other people. And, and yet sometimes we fail to connect the dots. I'm glad you're attempting to do that. The other comment I'll make relates to Mr. Peir. Mr. Peir, you emailed me some time back. I responded to you. I'm not going to get into any great detail here because should your project ever come before this council, I'd like to be able to vote. So, so anyway, I'd like to be able to at least hear it. But I would encourage you, as I would encourage every member of this, every resident in this city, to take advantage of our processes, one of which is a variance process, if you feel that that is appropriate and don't be shy about it. Mr. Mayor?
Any other comments? All right, next, please.
We need to adjourn the housing authority meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to reconvene the housing authority, coming back after closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Second. Housing's adjourned.
Okay, we have new business.
I will move that the lawsuits entitled DJM Construction Company, Inc. versus City of Glendale, case number BC 408133 and BC 428391, brought by and through their attorneys, James W. Beeterback, be compromised and settled and the same be and is hereby approved and accepted for a total payment in the amount of $285,000 to plaintiff DJM Construction Company, Inc. And the Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant for said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the entry of a dismissal with prejudice and execution of a release in the above entitled case.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes, and I'll just point out, that was actually one sentence.
Yes.
Yes, you just heard?
Yes.
Weaver? Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
I also have new business, Mr. Mayor. I move that the claim and lawsuit entitled Martha Grindel versus City of Glendale et Al, case number EC 047216, brought by and through her attorneys, Thon Beck and Vanny, Bonnie, be compromised and settled and the same be and is hereby approved and accepted for total payment in the amount of $112,000, $112,500 to plaintiff Marla Grindel and Thon Beck and Vanny. And the Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant for said sum for delivery to the city attorney upon the entry of a dismissal with prejudice and execution of a release in the above entitled case.
Second. Roll call.
Council members, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver? Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council duly authorize the city attorney's office to initiate legal action in three separate cases. The defendants and other particulars may be disclosed upon inquiry unless to do so will impact the ability to effectuate service of process.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver? Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Let's adjourn. We are adjourned.
There are second?
Second.